Good evening, everyone. We are calling the meeting to order and we will be led in the pledge by Trustee Handy.
Only after you lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
When do we do this? This is pretty.
Yes.
Finally got rid of those stupid.
Thank you. Madam Vice President, can we have a report out from closed session?
Yes, thank you. The Board voted to terminate employee 10995153. Motion, Trustee Ewen. Second, Trustee Withrow. Motion was passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 2.5, Approval of the Agenda. I just need a motion, thank you. I have an approval and I have a second.
Second.
A second from Trustee Reese. First was, the motion was Trustee Handy. And we have some changes. Trustee Gonzalez, one?
Thank you. I can't find it, but I think it's item 4.1. It's the calendar and the job description for the Chancellor. If we could pull that for discussion, please.
4.1 has been moved to action. We have 6.2 that has been pulled and we have 8.4 that has also been pulled. Any other items, changes to the agenda?
5.4.
Item 5.4, move to action. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Trustee Withrow?
Aye.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Napalia Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 2.6, Approval of the Minutes. May I have a motion?
It's been moved?
It's been moved. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Withrow?
Aye.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Napalia Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. We are moving to item 2.7, Swearing in Ceremony for Incoming Student Trustees. Are they here? One is stuck in traffic? Okay. And so we definitely, we can wait? Okay. Thank you. And that's just one? Where's the other?
He's the other one.
Oh, okay. We'll wait for her to come and then when you're ready, you can just notify the Board Clerk and then we'll make an adjustment. Thank you. Associate Student Government Reports. They're on vacation. Classified Senate Report.
Good evening, President Bonilla, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor White, Presidents and guests. I have three campus reports. First, from Berkeley City College. The recent Classified Senate Election produced a new set of officers. The new President is Felicia Bridges. The Vice President is Kyle Ocasio. The Secretary Treasurer is Jasmine Martinez. This is from Merritt College, Classified Senate. Last week, Merritt Classified Professionals, Faculty and Administrators attended a two-day certification for mental health first aid training. Secondly, Merritt College's Classified Appreciation Luncheon will be held Thursday, June 13th. Third, the Senate is looking forward to meeting with Chancellor White and President Burns next week at their Senate meeting on Tuesday, June 18th at 1:30. And last but not least, the Merritt College staff are concerned about what Peralta's plan is regarding the safety of staff and students come the end of June 2019. The last, the last report I have is from Laney College. I have a letter from the President of the Peralta Classified Senate, Glenn Pace, and I'm going to read it. "I was taken aback by the vote of this governing board's decision not to renew the contract with the Alameda County Sheriff's Office. Over the years, the staff, students, faculty and administrators have come to rely on the deputies, whom many of them know on a first-name basis. Over the 16 years that I patrol the campuses as a deputy sheriff, mainly at Laney College, before retiring in 2012, I constantly heard from the stakeholders in our community college what a difference the Alameda County Sheriff's deputies had made since taking over the contract. I and my fellow deputies took pride in providing law enforcement services with an emphasis on community policing. We were not just deputies. We became a part of the Peralta Community College family and made it our duty to make sure that everyone on our campuses felt safe. I think the same effort has and is being given now by the deputies who patrol our campuses. I asked the Board to consider the safety of the students, staff and faculty. The late-night classes, late-night computer labs, dark, dark work walkways, dark parking lots and broken emergency blue phones. Security guards are not sworn police officers. They have no arrest authority. Security guards can only report and call for the local police agency to come to the scene, which may never occur depending on how busy they are. It is my prayer that this governing board would reconsider this decision and come to some agreement with the district so that the contract with the Alameda County Sheriff's Office can be renewed. Thank you for your time, Glenn Pace, interim President, Peralta Classified Senate and retired Deputy, Alameda County Sheriffs." That is the end of the campus reports. Thank you very much for your attention and continued support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you for that. We'll move on to District Academic Senate Report. Thank you.
Good evening. Yes. The academics, the District Academic Senate met in a retreat at the end of May. We have new college academic senate president at Merritt College and we have a new one at Alameda College. And so we will be bringing them forward in the, in the fall. One of the main things that we've been concerned about in our discussions has been a couple of different issues is the instructional assistance. We've been getting numerous calls and concerns raised by faculty, particularly in the CE courses that require safety. And those instructional aids really, really provide the level of support that's needed. I would hate to have these things unresolved and have some way of trying to get this resolved before it becomes a safety issue and the faculty refuse basically to teach because they'll either have to reduce the classes or some other type of option. I hope that the Board takes this very, very seriously. I don't know if it needs the Board to call some arbitrator or a mediator or somebody to bring these, bring the district and the union together to try to get this resolved. But we're going to approach the fall with this unresolved. And I think that, I don't want to know what's going on in the, in the background, but I do think that the President of the Board should try to take some, some kind of task of trying to bring these people together and trying to see if we could bridge this. And I don't know if we need somebody else, but I would urge you to look at that. We're obviously concerned, as the Classified Senate indicated, about the, the police in terms of the sheriffs. And we understand that there's been concerns raised, but I think that some kind of a thorough analysis and look and see what in fact should be good for us needs to take place, but not any hurried action. So I urge you guys today to do the action that I think is going to occur today. So finally, I'd like to indicate that we're going to start our summer sessions at, at our colleges on the 17th. And thank you very much and look forward to working with everybody again.
Thank you for that. Public Communication, Madam Vice President. Can we, can we pause for a moment? It looks like our student trustees have arrived. Okay. And so we're going to have, one at a time, with your families and friends and supporters, please come to the center and Trustee Handy will meet you there. One at a time. Testing. Are you going to come and stand behind her, please? Yeah, the trustees are standing behind her. And who's taking the picture? Okay. So I-
I am Romina Contreras.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
-to carry out my responsibilities-
To carry out my responsibilities.
-as student trustee of the Peralta Community College District.
As student trustee of the Peralta Community College District.
I do personally commit myself-
I personally do commit myself.
-to convey the concerns of the student body-
To convey the concerns of the student body.
-to the Board of Trustees.
To the Board of Trustees.
And to convey the concerns of the Board of Trustees-
And to convey the concerns of the Board of Trustees.
-to the student body-
To the student body.
-to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Our new trustee, Romina Contreras. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to surround you.
That's right.
On your phone?
Yep.
We'll airdrop.
We'll airdrop.
Yeah, we'll airdrop.
Okay, one, two, three. Thank you.
Our next student trustee, Dowell Stanley. Can you raise your, can you raise your right hand, please? Is everyone else filled in? Wait, who's taking pictures? Okay. Want to state your name?
Dowell Stanley.
Do solemnly swear-
To carry out my responsibilities as student trustee of the Peralta Community College District.
I do personally commit myself-
I do personally commit myself.
-to convey the concerns of the student body-
To convey my concerns to the student body.
-to the Board of Trustees-
To the Board of Trustees.
And to convey the concerns of the Board of Trustees-
To convey the concerns of the Board of Trustees.
-to the student body-
To the student body.
-to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Look at that smile. Oh, good.
That is always such a highlight.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we're just going to turn this off. And now we are going to move into Public Communication. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call up Jennifer Shinowski, Lilly Lesz- Lessing? Do I have that right? Cassandra Upshaw. John Lindsay Poland. John Lindsay Poland.
Snuck up on me. You guys are fast this morning, or this evening. So I want to just mention a couple of things. The e-communicate is on hiatus over the summer, so I'm not sending out my commentary on the Board Agenda, so I'll just deliver it in person over the summer. There are a few things I want to mention. I want to reiterate some of my comments that I made over email about the security issue. Again, I echo what was said earlier that we have concerns about security on the campuses and we want to be sure that everyone feels safe on all four campuses. But we also have heard at these meetings many times the concerns that students have about policing on campus and the concerns that Board members have had about the cost of contracting out those services. So I'm glad to see it on the agenda again and I hope it gets resolved. And I commend the trustees again for actually engaging in the discussion and asking some hard questions about that contract at the last meeting that I'm sure were very unpopular. I am also glad to see that the DSPS interpreters are on tonight's agenda and that those positions are being filled. They are vital to the work that faculty do and, and the services that we provide to students. There are a couple of things on the agenda that I want to mention that I'd like for you all to really pay attention to. One is the staffing plan that's being presented. This is a plan that we've talked about, we've talked about staffing plans many times at a variety of shared governance meetings. This is the first I'm seeing that plan. I may have missed it in a meeting, but I don't think so. And so I'm curious about how that will actually be part of the shared governance process. The Planning and Budgeting Council or Committee, I don't know what we are, the PBC, should be engaged in such a process and help to come up with a robust staffing plan and I hope that that happens. The other thing is the budget presentation. So there are a variety of issues that I have with the budget presentation. As you all know, I've been here for two years as PFT President and the budget has been a primary concern, especially the way that we roll over the budget, the way that we tend to not actually do trend analysis, the way that we don't question where we're going over and under in last year's budget before we get a new budget. I was just re-elected to a second term, so you're going to hear me standing here for another two years, saying unfortunately the same things. This budget book is, looks to me exactly like last year's budget book. We had more money than we thought we were going to have, but we overspent, right? Do we know why? Do we know where? Do we understand the implications of that? We froze a bunch of positions, $4.5 million in frozen positions. Many of those were faculty positions. More than half of those dollars were faculty, full-time faculty positions that were frozen. PBC and PGC voted to unfreeze those positions and do a more robust analysis of the dollars. So we, we voted to keep the dollars in place, but to actually analyze what positions should be frozen. But I see in the budget, budget presentation that we are continuing the $4.5 million in frozen positions as, as an assumption. We've not seen any trend analysis and PBC has not engaged thoroughly in developing this particular budget book once again. So I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed to see COLA dollars being rolled into the budget and being claimed that they're being used for step and column increases, which are not COLA. We have seen teachers all over the region going out on strike and really protesting the fact that they can't survive in this area without some adjustments to our pay. So you'll be hearing more about these issues and seeing more of PFT members as our contract expires at the end of this month. And we really want to demand that the district and the trustees do what's right by the faculty and staff that are within the district. Thanks.
Thank you. Lilly?
Hi, my name is Lilly Leung. I'm a library technician too here at the Laney College Library. The reason why I'm here to, to let you know that I have watched the news recently in regards to the elimination of the Peralta Police Services and the Alameda County Sheriff's Officers. I mean, I thought, you know, we want to have the, all four campuses safe for everybody, for the faculty, the staff and the students. To eliminate the Peralta Police Services and the Alameda County Sheriff's Officers, that's going to put everybody at risk and everybody's going to be afraid to come to, I mean, go to the classes or go to work. And as, you know, situation, current situation is really bad, you know, with the, you know, enrollment going down. It's going to bring the enrollment further down if we're not going to have the Peralta Police Services and the camp, the Alameda County Sheriff's Officers to patrol the campuses. I would strongly urge you all to reconsider renewing the contract, to approve and renew the contract for the Peralta Police Services and the Alameda County Sheriff Officers in order to keep the, all four campuses safe. I have watched the video and I was really, you know, disappointed to see that six out of seven trustees have voted no, not to approve the contract. Only one trustee, which I'm not going to mention the name, have voted to support, to renew the contract. And I'm going to yield the remaining time to Cassandra. Thank you.
Thank you. Cassandra?
Hi. I serve as the Program Specialist for Division One at Laney College, which is Enrollment Services, which means that we have a very highly-charged environment where every time students have any challenges or any difficulties, they come to my desk to see my dean. And the reason that I can do this job is because I know that under certain circumstances, I can rely on deputies when things really get out of control. I have witnessed people being tased, being arrested, having mental health breaks repeatedly over the course of my decade or so doing this job. I have great deal of experience of what, what former Deputy Pace mentioned of having personal relationships and partnerships with individual deputies as well as the deputies as a whole, as well as the office as a whole. As a matter of fact, earlier today, we extended an invitation through Lieutenant Verbeck for deputies to show up and help us with the welcome table because they do very much indeed choose to work here because they want to work here and they want to work with us specifically. Sorry, I'm not, first time public speaking. I understand that there have been concerns about cultural sensitivity issues. I hope that we buy time to address them thoroughly and deeply. I have a photo, actually, of something that happened earlier today in the midst of the heat wave. One of the deputies this morning took money out of his own pocket and went to go buy a small trash can, bottles of water and ice so that he could stand out front all day long handing out water to any random member of the community who was hot and thirsty. And after he did that, his fellow deputies started pulling money out of their wallets and contributing and they kept it going all the way into their second shift. So we probably do have concerns about cultural sensitivity, but this is the potential we have to work with them. They want to work here. They choose to work, this assignment in particular, and they lose thousands of dollars every year, not counting overtime, just because of what we would call shift differential. They're giving up money to work here because they want to work at a college. They want to see our students succeed. They love going to graduation as much as I do. So if we do need to reconsider how we partner with them, and we do partner with them, very much so, when we get the opportunity to, when we take it upon ourselves to work with them, to partner with them, because they're ready at any time, from my experience, we could have an incredible force for good in this community. We could have some individuals on this campus who can set an example for other police officers on how to be a community partner. Thank you.
Thank you so much. John?
My name is John Lindsay Poland. I work for the American Friends Service Committee in the Healing Justice Program. And I want to address both, item 3.2, your security presentation, as well as your decision about the contract with Alameda County Sheriff's Office. I understand that it's unnerving to believe that you might be exposed to risks without armed security present. And I also understand that this Board had been seeking responses from the administration about the relationship with the Sheriff's Office for more than a year and that, in effect, the action that you took at the last meeting was in order to force action, which in fact took place because you now have amendments before you in that proposed contract in order to address those concerns. So I want to say two things about that. One is, three things. One is that the, the, the actions that are proposed as amendments to that contract are not cultural changes. They are, they're actions at the edges. Now, no one doubts the goodwill of the deputies that, that work on this campus, as was just demonstrated. But there are structural issues that, in the Sheriff's Office that create a culture that is, is harmful despite the individual's best will and efforts. So I would propose that there is more needed than just barbershop meetings and coffee with a cop in order to, the, the cultural competency piece of that contract revision is listed as optional. I think you should make it required. It should be a required part of that contract. Second thing I want to say is, this is not cheap. Now, they may be spending, they may be losing funds by, by working here instead of somewhere else, but it is costing this district $230,000 per deputy, including the technicians. That's a very expensive form of security. The third thing I want to say is that there is a, as you know, many calls to 911 and to security in general are mental health calls that do not require armed and sworn officers. There is a program that is visiting Oakland in two weeks, the day after your next meeting, called Kahoots, based in Oregon, which is a mobile crisis intervention team that integrates into the public safety system and responds to 911 calls. In Eugene, they respond to one-sixth of all calls without any police present. They handle non-criminal cases, homelessness, intoxication, disorientation, substance abuse, mental illness problems, dispute resolution, non-emergency medical care, first aid and transportation to services. If such a service is installed in Oakland, I would encourage this district to engage and participate in this service, together with OPD- to engage and participate in this service, together with OPD, in order to direct those kinds of 911 calls instead of the Sheriff's Department to that service. They will be presenting on Wednesday, the 26th, at St. Columba Catholic Church on San Pablo Avenue at six, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I will send each of you an invitation.
Can you repeat that, please?
It's Wednesday, the 26th, at St. Columba Catholic Church, 6401 San Pablo Avenue in Oakland, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And it's called CAHOOTS.
Can you spell CAHOOTS, please?
They're in cahoots with the police.
Thank you.
You can ask a clarifying question, sure.
Is that like the mobile response team, CAHOOTS, the services? Which we don't, which is deficient, but is it those services that we would use?
It's broader than that, and it is, it does not have police present. They work very closely with police, but when they deploy, they deploy without armed officers present.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public speakers. Madam President?
Thank you for that. We will move into Chancellor's Report, and if I can make one adjustment to the presentation, to Chancellor's Report, or Chancellor, you can go ahead and move 4.1 under your Chancellor's Report. So, we're moving it from Action Item to your report.
Yes, I think it isn't, okay?
It's the presentation component.
And we have Bryce Harris here, who will come up in a bit. But before we get into that, I just wanted to announce that last week, approximately 150 classified personnel here at the district office enjoyed a Classified Appreciation Day with pizza and lots of dessert, and the managers served, and the vice chancellor served, and I think all had fun. It was an annual event for classified appreciation. We also have an enrollment report, but I'm going to hold on that for a second. I just want to update you on our meeting last week with the Accrediting Commission, the ACCJC Commission. We met with them for approximately 30 to 40-some minutes. We had all of the presidents available and vice chancellors in the room. And the commissioners had received our five-year improvement plan and thought the report was well-done. They had also, in addition to the report, received our five-year detailed financial addendum. They were pleased with that. And they asked about seven questions in that whole time. And one of the questions was asked in different ways two or three times. But the bottom line is, they are most concerned about leadership commitment to the plan. They made, one of the commissioners made a point of, well, gee, it's great to have Fran White and others there doing the work, but what happens when you leave? And of course, I have no crystal ball, and there's no way of giving guarantees. And I think it was one of the commissioners who wanted a guarantee, and what I simply said is that the board has committed to a process to bring in strong leadership on a permanent basis for the permanent chancellor, and obviously, that's evident with the permanent chancellor search. The second area they were really concerned about, and there were some editorial comments about, well, Peralta's been here before, and you have a history of saying you're going to do one thing, and you do something else, and what about board accountability and commitment? And how do we know, and what is the guarantee that the board is going to stick to the plan? Well, again, there's no crystal ball. There's no way to guarantee. But I did tell them that the board has shown its commitment, and the board policy developed last month for having no less than a 10% reserve on an annual basis, and that went over very well. They were very pleased to hear that, and I know they made note of that. So, they will, they have convened, and we will receive their report at the end of the month, and we will be sharing that information with the board. Also, for my next item here, the summer schedule. In case you missed it, we are on a 4-10 schedule. That means, yeah, 4-10, four days a week, 10 hours a day. We're out on Fridays. So, we'll, we have three reports. We have the enrollment report, the CBT report, and then a report from Bryce Harris and his presentation. And what I'd like to do is go ahead and do the enrollment report, and then have Dr. Harris come up, and then Dr. Nikki Harrington. So, we'll start with Dr. Brown.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, community, and colleagues. Again, I offer the enrollment report from today for this board meeting, and we're looking at summer 2019. You'll notice that, again, the target for the summer is 10% of the total of 1,700 residential FTEs, and we have, to date, exceeded that target by 37.35 residential FTEs. You can notice by looking at each of the colleges, starting with Alameda, that Alameda has exceeded by over 22 FTEs residential. This all is residential. Berkeley City College by 40.9 FTEs. Laney is still approaching its target, and is deficit 53.86 residential FTEs, and Merit has exceeded by 27.82. So, the only caution around that is that we, well, yeah, we have enrollment still happening this week, as well as next week, so those numbers will go up. And then usually with census, we drop by about 3%. And then, it also does not include unstaffed sections. We have 4.59 unstaffed sections. And so, once those are staffed, then those go into the overall numbers, and that will show an increase. So, overall, our summer is looking good in terms of exceeding our target. And we'll take the final look at the next board meeting. Notice also, the productivity for summer is, has increased for all but three of the colleges. Alameda at 16.59, Berkeley at 15.19, Laney is at 13.28, and Merit at 16.44. And that brings our total to 15. We want that to increase. I also included, based on last meeting's questions from two of the trustees, day-to-day comparison from last summer to this summer. And so, the next chart shows you M means summer. And so, it's summer 18 and summer 19. And you'll see across the top that it's looking at a comparison of sections, students by head count, enrollment, residential FTEs, and then total FTEs. And then, on the left-side column, it has it broken down for each college, and then district totals. And so, you can see, looking at the residential FTE, since we focus so much on that, that the district total to date last year, the same time, was 1,731.71, and today, a year later, is 1,737, again showing an increase. And we'll, we'll come back and take a look at some more final numbers at the next meeting. And then, it shows below that some bar charts for each of the colleges. And it's basically taking the numbers above and puts it into these bar charts and gives a visual. So, the red bar shows the number of students. So, you can see that Alameda has a decreased number of students, but yet, the green is residential FTS. So, there's an increased FTS compared to the same day last year, meaning that there are less, fewer students, but they're taking more courses. And Berkeley's sections, which is, would have showed in blue, isn't showing because they have the exact same number of sections, which is noted above, excuse me, Alameda. And then Berkeley City College, again, it's showing, the blue is sections, red is students, the enrollment, the FTEs in green, and then the total FTEs. And Laney is showing the blue sections compared to this time last year, the number of students, the enrollment, the residential FTEs, and the total, and then Merit, the same as well. So, that's the end of the report today, if there's any questions. And next time, we'll look at more closely where we're at with summer, and also start to take a look at fall. We can look at day-to-day enrollment comparisons for that as well.
Thank you for that. I believe we may have some questions, and we'll start with Trustee Brown.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brown. I appreciate the level of detail in that comparison and the information that's provided. My question regarding the residential FTES targets is whether, when these are compared to, you've given us the comparison to what we were doing previously, and I'm wondering, have we adjusted, we're managing to close the gap, it appears, in some areas where we've had trouble? And I'm wondering what measures were taken that have resulted in this, that have provided this result? And whether or, and, well, actually, what have we done? Have we adjusted our numbers, our expectations, our projections, which was part of what was discussed? And if there have been other measures that have been taken?
So, we do know for sure that all of the vice presidents of instruction, the presidents, as well as the deans of instruction, are paying really close attention to the numbers every single day throughout the day, and they are adjusting accordingly. They look at the numbers, and they look at, they look at more tools than just this to determine whether or not sections should be cut or added. You know, they're really paying attention. The one significant change is that our target this year, for this academic year, is lower than last year. And so, we're exceeding that target, but we're also, we set a lower target because of our declining enrollment. And then, each college has its own strategies for how they're doing summer. There are some new efforts underway. Everyone's thinking about enrollment management. Enrollment management is reflected in the recently updated enrollment management plans. For example, COA has a four-week summer, back-to-back with another four-week summer. Laney's adding non-credit to the summer, you know, all kinds of things to respond to the community and to help us turn around. And it's looking like a good start for us so far. Real, real important gains for Berkeley City College is reflected here, and that's also really positive.
In addition, there was a request from the board at the last meeting that a demo be shown.
The live side of the dashboard?
Yeah, that's right. Live side of the dashboard. So, we're going to take a few minutes to do that.
So, while we're working on the technical side, I will tell you just very quickly that institutional research, we have a project this summer that we're calling Data Accessibility. So that when faculty come back, they'll hopefully be pleased with the fact that we want to make more data available to all faculty, staff, classified, and actually even students in the public. We're doing that by revitalizing the institutional research website and putting a number of the new dashboards that have been created on that website. And I'm going to show you just a few, because there's many, but just so you can get an idea. Okay, so, so one thing I'll show you, and the community as well, is that on the Peralta website, there is an institutional research site. It's under District Offices, and you scroll down to Institutional Research. And when you click on there, there's some immediate data that's available, including PCCD Transfer Data Dashboard. These are all from the Power BI platform. The Student Right to Know Dashboard, this is something that we are obligated to, make sure that students know about ethnicity, gender, these kinds of demographics. Student Outcomes Data, that looks at success, retention, and completion, as well, a new tool called the Equity Tool. This, this website will look very different by the time Flex Day comes. We're changing things to icons, and we're adding more dashboards, as well as a fact sheet for Peralta, so that people can very quickly get the basic demographics and information about Peralta, and then dive deeper in by looking at these dashboards. So, I'll just click on one dashboard, just so you can see how they look. This is the Transfer Dashboard. And there are a number of things that you can manipulate on here, including which college that you'd like to see transfer information from, or you can have a district-wide look. And then, it shows here, this is hard to see probably for the public, but from left to right, it shows annual numbers and increases and decreases as well. It shows here where the students are going, generally speaking. And down at the bottom, there are six different tabs to this transfer dashboard. So, we really welcome everyone to begin to take a look at each of the dashboards, play around with them, ask themselves questions, and give us feedback on them as well. So, this is giving more detail about the University of California transfers, particularly what schools our students transfer to in the UC system. And, and then the same for, oh, this is showing ethnicity and gender. So, again, I won't go through all of them, but it's, there's a lot of great information on there. And then, a couple other things on the website, and... One is that we have an older system of BI, it's called the BI Tool 11G, the Business Intelligence Tool, and it can't be reached right now. However, that tool is what most of the VPIs and deans use, as well as some chairs, because it gives a lot of detail down to the most low-enrolled classes. It takes a look at all the sections on the campus. You can drill down by subject and look at a certain discipline, like psychology. It shows you the classes that are unstaffed. It gives you a great deal of information, and it's very user-friendly. However, it's very costly to have individual user licenses. So, the decision was made to move forward with Power BI. This decision was made over a year ago from the IT department. And the Power BI Tool is much more affordable, so that we could give licenses to every single staff that it's requested from their managers, as well as faculty chairs particularly, or super-users of faculty who want access to that. And when they have access, what it means is that inside their email, they can do like I'm doing. I'm in my email, I go up to the Outlook menu, and I can go down to where it says Power BI, and click on that. And it will show the different tools and apps available. And so, we'll take a look at the Enrollment Management one. This is where I get the Enrollment Management report that we look at each board meeting, and it pulls it up. Now, when it's live, you can look at 1920, which is what we just did. We looked at summer, but you can go back to 1819 or 1718, and it gives a little bit more summary there as well. So, this is what most presidents and VPIs look at definitely every single morning to just take a look at what's happening. But there are also other apps in this Enrollment Management dashboard that I've asked IT to create, and the VPIs have also asked for additional dashboards that, again, we're going to put these all on the Peralta website, so that anybody can access them. So, for example, we asked for a dual enrollment by term, because we're really paying attention to the growth of dual enrollment, which school, which schools that we have dual enrollment, which colleges. There are a few tabs that you can click on there, summarizing what's happening in dual enrollment at each college. There's also an app for non-credit, and it will show you if you, we, if it's a regular non-credit or a CDCP non-credit. And again, that's an area that, as we identified in the five-year plan, that is growing, and that we want to pay particular attention to. And so... plan, that is growing, and that we want to pay particular attention to. And so they created a dashboard for that for us, which can help us look at the FTEs and help us calculate the impact on the budget. So that's just a small taste of what we have. I'm talking probably a little fast, because I know there's a lot on the agenda, but any time that the trustees or community have any questions about how to utilize this, we have a team of people ready to come sit down and walk people through it. This fall, once our website is redone, we are strategizing how we're going to make sure we get out to the colleges regularly and offer sessions to faculty and to staff on how to work these dashboards to get the information that they want. We want everyone to have access to the data, and to also know how to interpret the data, and to use the data for decision-making. And the best way to do that is to make it easily accessible and to train people on how to do it. So that's just a little walkthrough. I hope that that's helpful.
Thank you. I think you may have a couple of questions. Trustee Weinstein.
Yes.
It's really good. I just want to clarify, did you say that in the fall, it's going to be, it's going to look very different? Is it going to be on the landing page of the colleges and the Peralta website?
It's going to be on the Peralta main site, and yes, it'll be linked at all the college sites. And we also have, I forgot to mention this, but a new data request form that we're going to start instituting district-wide, that will help people get the data that they want. And so it'll look different, because we want to use icons and make it just much more simple and less wordy, and kind of archive some of the older materials on that site.
Is there some possibility that it can be on the landing page? Because just going to where you have to go to see it, people are not going to do it. So is it possible to have those links on the first page?
It is. I'll need to talk to our webmaster and take a look at how we could do that, in a way. It's a crowded page, but I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. I've seen it on some of the other colleges, and I thought it was good.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for that. Chancellor.
Okay, again, thanks very much. And now we'll bring up Dr. Harris.
President Bonilla, members of the Board, and Chancellor White, thank you very much for allowing me some time on the agenda this evening to give you a brief background on the position description and the proposed calendar for the selection of your next chancellor. I'd remind the Board that in March of this year, you announced your intention to search for a new chancellor of the district, and at that time, you employed CBT, from whom I am representing, to assist you in that search. Now, unlike most search firms' searches, the CBT approach is much more supportive of the Board and the organization, so that at the end of the process, we feel strongly it's our role to make sure that there's ownership of the new chancellor once she or he is selected and gets here. Now, the key to making sure that happens is to have a very, very inclusive approach, especially in the initial development of the search calendar and the position description. Over the past several weeks, I've conducted a series of steps designed to produce a calendar and a position description that is reflective of the organization and this Board's desire in the next chancellor of the district. I've had the opportunity to speak with more than 200 members of the organization, including members of all the members of the Board, members of the staff, faculty, administration, and students, and the community, and produce the two documents that are with item 4.1 this evening for your consideration. The steps taken to gather the information included the initial conversations with each member of the Board individually, and then unlike past experiences, the Board asked that we go much further this time, and so instead of having one public or open forum, we had five of those forums, one at each of the colleges and one here at the district office, including more than 150 folks who showed up and responded to those forums. We also had small group meetings at each of the colleges for the governance leaders of the faculty, classified staff, and management team, and individual and small group meetings with members of the management here at the district office, as well as a number of individual telephone conversations for management leaders, governance leaders, and key individuals who could not make one of the forums or one of the meetings at the campuses. And so from all of that work, the findings were collected, and the work that you see this evening is reflective of those, but I think it's important to know that there was a tremendous amount of consistency in what I heard from all segments of the district. People were extremely candid. In fact, I have 50 pages of notes to underscore how candid they were. But what was striking to me was that the same themes came up over and over in every single conversation, and I'm going to tick off the dozen or so themes that came up and that you will see reflected in the position description. First and foremost was a commitment to student success and access for the students in this region. They want a leader who leads with transparency and is willing to make a long-term commitment to Peralta, and specifically, that means a five-to-eight-year minimum tenure as chancellor. They want a leader that is honest and has the ability to build trust in the organization, which they think has suffered in the past, and demonstrates a successful ability to build a team. They want demonstrated understanding of, commitment to, and experience in a very diverse community. They want someone with the knowledge of successful systems and processes, especially in a multi-unit or multi-college organization, and especially in the areas of finance, facilities, and HR. They want experienced and effective communicator who also has great listening skills. They want someone who has respect for and willingness to participate in a shared governance environment, and has the ability to work with an elected Board of Trustees. They're seeking someone who has a tremendous value for accountability at every level, an understanding of, and experience in community college accreditation, and someone who is tough enough to take the heat that goes with a job like this. And so before you this evening are two documents. I'll refer first to the draft calendar. When we initially envisioned this search, it was on a much more compressed timeframe, but when I talked with the Board, and especially the governance leaders, it became quite clear quickly that rushing this process would be a tremendous mistake, especially trying to do the key interviewing of candidates over the summer. And so this calendar reflects the Steering Committee not beginning its work, the Selection Committee not beginning its work, until after the beginning of the fall semester. And if this calendar holds true, and of course, there may be some changes in it along the way, but it would be expected that in October or November, the Board would make a selection, and you would have a candidate onboard soon thereafter. Then the job description that is also attached to item 4.1, I will not go through line by line, but I do want to underscore, when you look at the opportunities and responsibilities, you will see embedded in those bullets, the very items that I discussed a moment ago, and they are in relative priority order. So for example, under Opportunities and Responsibilities, the first item there is a commitment to student success and access, and the second is a demonstrated passion for sensitivity to the wonderful diversity of the district service areas. And as you read down that list, you'll see the very items that came from the forums and the conversations that we had. Under Leadership and Management Characteristics and Expectations, again, here you see management experiences and characteristics that again, are reflective of what the forums and the individual conversations said the organization wanted in a new leader. And under Education and Experience, again, you will see highlighted those very items that were mentioned in all of the forums. I think it is rare that an organization has the level of clarity that was articulated by this Board and the organization in the forums and the conversations. I think that's a tremendous opportunity. There are many chancellor tenures that have been unfortunately brief, because what the organization thought they wanted was not what they really wanted and needed. I think in this case, it's crystal clear to you as the Board, and to the organization, what you're looking for in the next leader. There's a great deal of synergy around what all of you think you need, and I think it's now up to all of us, working over the summer to recruit candidates for the post, and then in the fall, to vet those candidates fully, and ultimately, this Board's responsibility to select the next chancellor of the district. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bryce. Questions? Thoughts? Trustee Gonzalez.
First of all, thank you. You bring a lot of experience and credibility and legitimacy to this process, and that you chose to do that is both helpful to us, but also reflective of a set of values that you must share. So I want to start by just thanking you for your help in this. I just have two pretty, relatively minor things, and it's on the job description under Minimum Qualifications and the Desirable Qualifications. And the fourth bullet is sort of boilerplate language, understanding of, sensitivity to. In some of our recruiting documents, our job descriptions, that bullet mirrors more the bullet right above it, and that's documented successful experience. So it's one thing to like, say you understand. It's another thing to be able to really demonstrate through your record that you've done it. And, you know, so I would have reframed that to say something like, "successful experience promoting," or some demonstrated experience. And I don't want to wordsmith on the dais here, but you get the gist of where I'm going here, that it's not just a concept, that there's got to be a track record here. And I can't imagine this Board hiring somebody without a serious track record, so why don't we put it in the minimum calls and just, and call it done. On the desirable calls, there's a bullet there with experience in shared governance and collective bargaining in a college environment, and I personally would like to see that actually be a little stronger. It's more than just experience of, it's respect for and appreciation of both the value of collective bargaining, but also the value of shared governance. There are people who put up with it. There are other people who really embrace it and see that there's real value added in crowdsourcing in that way, and having workers represented. So if we can modify those to include sort of more of an appreciation and respect for those, I'll feel a lot more comfortable. Otherwise, I think this looks great. I really like that it's inclusive, and it's really clear that a lot of people had their input, and that you listened. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? I think you've done a wonderful job. Oh, trustee Weinstein.
Hi. Thank you. I really like it. Enjoyed working with you. I wondered, under Leadership and Management Characteristics and Expectations, you have that puts the access of citizens to the college and the success of students. I wondered if you might want to add, that puts the access of citizens and community members. Because as we know, we have a strong population of community members. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bryce.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Chancellor.
Thank you. Okay, and now, last but not least, we'll have Dr. Nikki Harrington come forward, and she's here to share some information around the current CBT report, Phase One.
Good evening. President Bonilla, the trustees, presidents, vice chancellors, other colleagues at the table. We really appreciate the time that we've spent with you. We've had a whirlwind of a time in Phase One. The CBT project was for Fiscal Improvement Services, and it's broken into two phases, so we have just completed the first phase. You contracted with us the end of February. We started right away, and we just completed a couple of weeks ago with this final report. So the one thing that I will say is it's a very lengthy document. I know you have a lot to read, so tonight's time with you is just to give you an overview of the 30,000-foot level of Phase One. I know that you have a board retreat planned for July, and at that time, you'll have not only the results from this report, but you'll also have the ACCJC feedback, you'll have the FICMAT report, you'll have any new information on finances from the state. So you can take all of that information together to look at how it all fits together. I was pleased to see in Dr. Harris's report on the chancellor job description, many of the items that we saw in Phase One, so that was really great. I want to thank everyone who spent time with us. We spent over 1,000 hours during that three months, our team, working with all of you, and we met with several hundred people throughout the process, and it's been great. I want to particularly thank Vice Chancellor Siri Brown. Where are you, Siri? It's dark. I can't see where you are, over there in the corner. She was our district liaison and did a great job of helping us connect with people and get information for us as best she could, and that was very helpful. So that was great. I want to start off my remarks with one comment, and that is, one point. One point. 106 to 105. If you watched the game last night, one point, yes. And even though Katie only had 12 minutes with the team, 11 points out of that 12 minutes. And I was watching the game and rooting for the Warriors and thinking, you know, that's just like the Peralta district, very persevering, resilient, ready to go, and to really conquer the issues they have in front of them and meet the challenges with which you're faced. And I thought, you know, this is the culture of this whole Alameda County area. So it's kind of interesting to see it in a different aspect. So we'll see how they do in the next game. We've got to get another one in there. Anyway, I just have four slides for you, and I'm going to hand out, a handout that has them all in it as well. So our Fiscal Improvement Services Project Phase One, as I mentioned, started in March and completed just a couple of weeks ago. The timeframe was aligned such that it fit with what the district was already doing. So as you recall, in the fall, there was correspondence from ACCJC about some of the needs for the district in the area of fiscal health and fiscal risk, and the district began an internal analysis. And so you see in that first phase, the internal analysis that started in the fall continues, and it's an ongoing process. It's a living document, your five-year fiscal plan. At that time, as a Board, you engaged services with both FICMAT and ourselves, and the two projects are coming together, I think nicely. We're seeing the same kinds of findings, whether you look at ACCJC, or the interview sessions that Dr. Harris had with people looking at the next chancellor position, or FICMAT, or the internal review. You're seeing a lot of synergy, a lot of commonalities that are taking place, and that's good, because it really brings to light the areas that you want to focus on as a district. So we have our recommendations. You're going to be getting a couple of more here in the next few weeks before, I think, before the retreat about that time. And then Phase Two would start in the And then Phase Two would start in the fall, with the implementation of recommendations. What we would like to do is integrate the findings that you get from these various sources. So, you start off with an integrated planning approach, that you're not doing separate pieces, but that you're integrating all of the internal work by the colleges, their enrollment management plans as an example, and the thrust that they have for growing enrollment, and the other recommendations you're getting from the various agencies. So, that integrated planning is very important, and we would work then through the 1920 year for the operationalizing of those recommendations from the various entities. And it will take a while. The project, as we saw the project from the outset, was focused on four key objectives. The fiscal review obviously was critical, improving the stability and sustainability of the district, so that you don't have quite such sweeping peaks and valleys, but that you have a sustainable, healthy, reduced risk in your financial structure. Secondly, organizational efficiencies and accountability, you see these areas are a big focus in each of the groups that is working with you. Objective three, enrollment management, maximizing student access and success, being sure that we have a balance of both of those and keep the focus on both ends of the spectrum. And then, fourth, the executive turnover and the leadership needed for the district. I mentioned the two phases, you'll see them there. We call the first phase discovery phase, because essentially what we're doing is discovering everything about the institution through the institutional assessment in those areas. And then the planning phase, operationalizing the recommendations and integrated planning, as I mentioned. The approach that CBT takes when it works with an institution is an approach that is very transparent. We are very open, we meet with whatever groups want to meet with us, we have a set list of groups that we want to meet with, but we've had some ad hoc meetings with people that wanted to spend some time with us. Very participatory, we started off with, as you know, the Board of Trustees and the shared governance group leaders and the various entities that are here in the district meeting with folks. We focus very much on the data and research that's needed to drive decisions, so that you're not following intuition or whoever you happen to talk to. If I talk to Tim here, I've got Tim's view, but I don't know everybody else's view unless I actually survey the room. So, that data provides a really rich base for you to make decisions on. And we do balance both quantitative and qualitative data. We got a lot of feedback from students, we got a lot of feedback from the people who work here, faculty, staff, administrators, executives. And so, we found a lot of information that was very rich for our findings. And obviously, student-focused. The lens that we use to look at the student continuum, we call it the student life cycle continuum, we focus through that lens of the student connecting with us, and then entering the institution, progressing on their curriculum, curricular plan, and then completing their educational plan, whatever that may be, certificate, degree, transfer, job attainment, whatever it may be. And so, that continuum brings to light both the access and success, it also fits with the new student-centered funding formula, so those pieces all fit together. The recommendations we came up with, we saw six areas that were critical for supporting student access and success. If you start at the top of the wheel there with the first one, leadership and accountability, that came out loud and clear, obviously, in your chancellor's search process that's ongoing. It also came out in the ACCJC discussions that you had earlier this, was it last week? I guess it was last week. That is something that people see, that stability and leadership, the board leading the institution, and building accountability throughout the institution, both in the district office and for colleges. Secondly, the next theme area of recommendations was enrollment management. This is a very strong area, and certainly, the people are really focused on this area. You heard in Vice Chancellor Brown's report earlier, the focus on productivity, trying to get the productivity levels up, where you're running around 14, 15 in your FTEs per FTEF, full-time equivalent faculty member. You want that to be 17 and a half, that's really how you're funded, is on a 17 and a half basis. So, you really want to get up to that 17 and a half level. You also want to open the doors and have ways to improve access for students, to reach out to students that aren't here yet, to reach out to students who are taking maybe just a couple of courses that might be able to take more if your scheduling process was better. Looking at the work across colleges, and the colleges are working very hard on trying to work across the four colleges to serve students, since many of your students attend more than one of your colleges. So, a lot of focus in the enrollment management area. Systems and processes, we did a lot of work in investigating how systems and processes work at Peralta or don't work at Peralta. And one of the glaring areas that you've all talked about is the information technology area, implementing the rest of your PeopleSoft modules, particularly, the two that came to light as being extremely important were the Student Services Module and the HR Personnel Module, so that the Personnel Module can talk to the Financial Module and you can pull information together. Those two are extremely critical. You have three versions going on, you have 9.0, 9.1, and 9.2, is that right? Man, I'm trying to remember, is it, there's three different ones, you have pieces of three different ones going on. We also heard from lots of folks about manual processes needing to be automated, and how much people really want to get things automated, so that they can get information quickly, not wait three months for it, whatever it may be. And you have more chance for error when things are manual. So, a lot of focus on trying to automate those processes. And in the midst of our study of your systems and processes, we, since we found a lot of emphasis being required in the information technology area, Dr. White asked us to take a little deeper dive in that area and do a targeted, focused attempt at trying to get at information technology, and you have in your packet a separate focused assessment on information technology because of that. The fourth area is organizational structure and staffing. Looking at organizational structure is something an institution really, it's desirable for an institution to do about every five years, and it's a good time for you, you're at that point of looking at the structure, first of all, in the district office, and then however that plays out, then looking at the structure in the colleges. So, they have to work in tandem with each other. However you decide to centralize or decentralize certain services, however that is decided, that then needs to have an organizational and structure and staffing that mirrors that, those decisions you've made for centralized and decentralized staffing. And you have a little bit of a mix of both right now that people would really like to see improved. Also, in the organizational structure and staffing section, we heard a lot about training needs, training and development needs, and one aha in the study was that there is not a full-time staff development person in the institution, for the size of your institution and all the employees that you have and students that you have, there is not a full-time employee. You have a wonderful flex coordinator, Jason, is that his name? Scott, Scott, who we met with and had a really great conversation with him, he's doing a marvelous job in the flex activities for faculty, but that's a faculty flex focus. All of your employees need an onboarding process, development and training over time, and an exit process. So, that, we saw that as an area of great need. The organizational structure and staffing area kind of crossed with the accountability, the first one, in that your employee base, as you have employees that are struggling without a strong accountability system, you don't have a way to look at improvement. You know, can this person improve in an area where they're struggling? Do they need a different job perhaps in the institution? Do they need some professional development? You know, what is it that's needed? But to be able to do that, training and development, or progressive discipline, or whatever you need to do, first, you have to have a good job description, and you have many job descriptions that are out of date that need to be updated. So, that whole cycle, that HR cycle, is something that, if you address, that would help you with some of your staffing issues. The fifth area, fiscal stability, obviously, the whole project was about fiscal health and fiscal stability, but in particular, the fiscal stability focused on what are the things that cause you to be stable or unstable? So, we looked at some of the same areas that FICMAT is looking at, we also looked at how budgets have traveled over time, so if you have overspending in areas, then looking at that particular area to see how does that need to be restructured for the next year's finances, so that it works better for you. So, all the things that are under fiscal stability were in that, pretty much in that section. And then, lastly, public image and marketing, and these are kind of sequential in that if you have leadership and accountability in place, and you have good enrollment management laid out with your programs sequenced well, and your guided pathways working well, and your systems and processes in place where people can access the website, and they can find information they need, and you have the right structure of staffing, and you're fiscally stable, now you have a good public image. And so, you have, that public image provides you with the opportunity to market yourselves and the colleges to the local communities and to recruit students, and that includes not only the outreach to students who might not be attending right now, but also an in-reach to students who might not be aware of various courses or programs that you have, or services that you have in the Student Services area. So, these six areas worked together, and I'll pause with that to say that through time, as you progress, new information comes in all the time. So, the financial picture changes, we've seen it just since we've been here, changed maybe four times, I think, just in the three months that we've been here, and you have a recent addendum and new information, even just in the last couple of weeks. That will keep changing, which means your financial plan, your five-year plan, which says right on the front is a living document, it definitely is a living document, because it changes all the time. So, with new information on finances and new information on enrollments, as you watch your enrollment reports and see how your enrollment is doing, all that becomes new information to continue to inform these areas of recommendations. So, I'll pause with that and address any, you know, kind of high-level questions people might have.
That's great. Thank you, Dr. Harrington. So, we can pause and take a few questions. Trustee Reese.
Thank you. This was a fascinating read, and I think it answered a lot of the questions that we had been thinking about for a bit, but hadn't had the opportunity or the wherewithal to be able to understand. It was an interesting study to actually compare the CBT report with the ACCJC report, because I think we were able to make comparisons, and there were areas of, I guess, not overlap? So, it was an interesting study. But I do look forward, though, to actually being able to delve into this much more deeply and much more comprehensively at our retreat. But I must say, this was very instructive, so thank you.
Good. Great.
I'm sorry, any other questions? Trustee Brown?
I had a question, really about student success and about students that are applying but not enrolling, and those were some of the things that were brought up in the report. And that's really, goes to our core and our mission in a very pragmatic way. And I'm wondering if there, if you could give us some insight on regarding the, or at least delve into the recommendations that were provided with regard to those particular areas, because that means that the students that are here don't know what their options are. If there's no degree audit or credit audit, it means that they could be needing support that they're not getting. And it means that somehow we've reached people, but they've decided not to go through with it, which is generally, probably, an issue with regard to when the classes are scheduled, childcare, transportation, housing, all those things that are part of the barriers that people have to education that create a cycle. So, if you could talk to us more about those recommendations and how we could make some changes to address those.
Right. A student once told us, "The hardest thing I should have to do is go to class." And if you think about that, the hardest thing that they have to do shouldn't be trying to fill out their financial aid form, or trying to register, or trying to get a schedule of classes that meets their ed plan. The hardest thing they should have to do is go to class. And I thought that was a very telling comment. That happened at a different institution, but the theme still applies. Your front end, which is that connection and entry, those first two phases of the continuum, are extremely important for students. And so, we looked at data of where students drop off, where are your lost points, we call them lost points. You know, does the student apply, but then they don't follow through, and if so, why? We found out some of that was due to high schools having students fill out applications for the practice of it, and they were never intending to come. But we also found that half of those students were over high school age. So, that's not the only answer. So, there are problems with students trying to register, we need to dive a little deeper into why are they having difficulty registering, why are they having difficulty applying and registering? Is it because the systems are difficult to maneuver, they can't find the information that they need, they can't get the schedule they need, they can't see an advisor for three weeks, and they get tired and they leave? A deeper dive is needed on that front end to see where they are. I didn't mention in the slides, but we did have, as you recall, the two additional surveys that were done out in the community, and that was very helpful to give us the information. We did both the general survey, and then we did a survey of English-language learners or English speakers of other languages. They might speak two or three different languages, but English is not their first language, and they may have difficulty accessing you because of that. So, we're trying to get some information from them as well, so that was very helpful. So, in looking at that front end, that access point and where the drop-offs are, that's where the focus needs to be, and that needs to be done at a grassroots level in each college, because it may be different in each college. I mean, we heard that a student, for example, maybe a student is a DSPS student, and they go to one college, but then to go to the other college for one of the classes that they need, they have to start the process all over. By the time they do that, it's too late to register for the class. So, we, as the community college folks, need to organize ourselves around the student, not have the students trying to organize themselves around us. So, it's flipping that process. But it'll take a deeper dive to do that. There was a question last session, trustee Weinstein, I think you were the one that asked, "What does it cost us when we lose a student?" I think that was your question last time that I was here. Well, the going rate for an FTE is $5,500. So, if a student comes in and they have trouble registering, and they say, "Oh, the heck with it, I'm just going to go to Contra Costa, Diablo Valley, or, you know, someplace else," you lost that student, you just lost $5,500. You lose 100 of those students, you can do the math, and you can see where you're losing money. So, it's very important on the front end to make those processes very smooth. So, I don't have discrete examples of what the reasons are, because that'll be in Phase Two, to look at what are the causes for that, where we can, you know, actually meet with folks in Student Services and at the individual colleges to find out, okay, we found this is a place where we're losing students, let's dive into that a little more and try to find out more what that is.
Thank you, Dr. Harrington. I also want to share with everyone, and first of all, thank you for the study. I also, I'd like to remind our trustees that this is a deep, I should say, a first read of a very comprehensive analysis that has been done on the first phase of the data gathering, and so, this is really important to us. We want to make sure that at our retreat, that we focus on areas of priority and really understand what the implementation and timeline would potentially look like as the action plan is being developed for Phase Two. And so, at the retreat, Chancellor, I believe that we want to set aside a significant amount of time, so that we can review the study in depth, and hopefully invite Dr. Harrington back, because there will be much more engaged discussion, as this is our first read and we dive into it a bit more. So, I thank you and hope that you can join us for that retreat.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much for your time. Thanks. And we've really enjoyed working with everybody. People are really focused on students here. So you may be struggling in various areas, but people are committed. So remember that 106, 105.
Yeah.
One point, that's all it took. Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor, next item.
Thank you. We're going into our presentations with the first item, 3.1 is the tentative budget for 2019-20. Dr. Harrison?
Thanks, Tim. Good evening, President, Board members, Chancellor, colleagues, members of the public. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to discuss this tentative budget with you. I would, just a couple of comments to kind of set the stage. First, I'll set the stage about myself. I have been doing budgeting for community colleges for over 42 years. I have taught budgeting and accounting for roughly about 10 years and I've also studied for in excess of 16 years. Everywhere I have worked is that the same issues come up about budgeting. And a lot of us look at the budget and document or look at the numbers as the budget. We look at that as being the key items. That really is not. A budget is really a statement of our values. The assumptions are the most important thing, is that with properly documented assumptions, any accountant within the limitations that we have about money and et cetera can turn those assumptions into numbers. And the format of the numbers, the format of the budget is a decision that an institution makes about how they want their document to look. But the numbers themselves is not the important thing. The assumptions are the important. And this is what we really should be spending our time with participatory governors. This is what we really should be spending our time really discussing and coming to a clear conclusion of what assumptions do we want to use in developing a budget. So tonight, then, we also have to recognize that as a budget in community colleges, we have some severe limitations. And there's some severe limitations centered around our mission, centered around some state laws, centered around how we operate. And those limitations are not easily changed. They can be changed, but they are very difficult to change. And some of them really are impossible. I'll give you an example. 50% law is impossible to change. The state law says that 50% of your current cost of education will be spent on classroom instructors. We can't change that. And so no matter how much we want to change it, we have to meet that assumption and we have to build that assumption into our budget. Another assumption or something else we can't change is that in our policies, we have step and column increases that are automatically based on anniversary, yearly, for employees who have not reached the top of their scale. Building the budget, we have to build that in. We can't change that. We have to place money into the budget to cover step and column increases. If we do not, we will find that we will not have enough budget to, enough money to operate and carry out our missions. So it's some of those things that I really want to bring out in front so that all of us will understand what are some of the limitations and how these numbers are derived. So in the document that we'll be going over, if we're starting off, as I said, assumptions are very important. So we start off with the assumptions. Let me make sure I got this right. The first set of assumptions that we start off with, some general assumptions. And those are throughout this document and throughout this whole budget planning. Before I do that, there's one more thing I want to say, is that we confuse sometime the tentative budget, the mission of the tentative budget, with the adopted budget. The state has not even signed a budget yet and we are bringing a tentative budget here for the board to approve. The real numbers from the state may change before we have a final budget. So a tentative budget, from a legal point of view, really is a document that gives us the right to write checks on July the 1st. If the board do not pass a tentative budget by July the 1st, we cannot write a single check. We cannot pay no bills. So a tentative budget by state law is really to give institutions the ability to continue operating until the state complete a budget and make it available so we can finish our budget. Now, looking at the, at the, some of the assumptions, first of all, we're going to be talking about the general fund, the unrestricted general fund. We're not going to talk about all the categorical funds and et cetera because those are really self-balancing sets of accounts. Is that whatever money we get for categorical purposes from wherever it is, is that we have to live within that budget. And so we are really, but it's the unrestricted general fund that are really the documents or the area of the budget that can create nightmares for us or make it very difficult for us to operate or put us in a position of where we have FICMAT and others coming in saying, "You need to change your behavior." So we'll be looking at the unrestricted general fund. And when we look at the unrestricted general fund, one of the things that you will notice and we have zeroed in on is that we are trying to ensure, and according to these budgets, we're ensuring that we will have a ending fund balance or reserve, as some call it, no less than 10%. And that is looking at the current year that we are ending as well as looking at the following year, which is the 1920 year, that we are looking at an ending fund balance of no less than 10%. In some cases, it is highest 11%. And again, that is a plan. Another issue that comes up, some of us think the budget is reality. The budget is a plan. We like to have the reality to be as close to that plan as possible, but things will change. Unforeseen circumstances will arise and that will cause the plan and the actuality of what we are doing to be out of alignment. So anyone who look at the budget and say, "That's what you're supposed to do," that's what we plan to do. And that's what we try to monitor and control so we be as close to that as humanly possible. But there is no guarantee that on any of those line items, we will come in exactly at that point. Another issue we have as a general, tax anticipation, tax revenue anticipation notes. Many districts and even Peralta for a period of time, we used to sell tax revenue anticipation notes. They cost us money. So we don't really, if we can operate and we can have sufficient cash to where we do not have to do that, we don't sell tax anticipation revenue, or tax revenue anticipation notes because it costs the money. And it may cost more than we can earn on the money we have in the account. So at least for two years, to my knowledge, you have not had to sell, have not, have chosen not to sell tax revenue anticipation notes. And so that's an assumption that we have built, is that we will manage our cash so we do not have to borrow money by using that type of vehicle. We're looking at the enrollment. We are shooting, we are basing the budget based on a enrollment target of 16,861 FTS, credit residence FTS. If we produce more than that, it will be to our good up to the amount that the governor may have in the budget for any growth. But we are looking at that target and checking with the staff, it appears that we are on target, that we at least will reach that target of 16,861. In terms of enrollment growth, we have not built any growth into the tentative budget. So we are not betting that we are going to grow 10% or 5%. When we come back, when we come up with the final budget, maybe we will have some growth. When we look at what's happening with summer and how we are planning our classes and et cetera for the fall, we may anticipate some growth, particularly if the governor has money in the budget for the growth. But as it stands now, we are basically based on, using conservative approach. We are not building growth into this budget, but we may at the time have the tentative budget. The statutory COLA that the, has proposed to be in the budget is 3.26%. Now, there's a statement in here where we say we use that COLA to fund, a part of that COLA, if you will, to fund step and column increases. That's just a fact. That's our only new money. Step and column increases has to be funded. And so therefore, we're saying we're taking part of that money and just putting on salary schedule for step and column increases. If we get additional money, then maybe we will have more than COLA as a new revenue. But at this point in time, to make sure that we have sufficiently covered the cost of our staff, that we are adding money to the salary schedule to cover step and column increases. And we're taking it out of the, the assumption is it's coming from the COLA. I mean, we just got a big part of money and we're making sure we put part to step and column increases, whether we're taking it from revenue, whether it's taken from COLA or taken from something, that really doesn't matter. But the fact is, we are covered in step and column increases. We are estimating that unrestricted lottery revenue is going to be $204 per FTS. And that would give us about $3.8 million. Now, that's not all new money. Some of that is more than what we received the prior year because we get, we have lottery revenue come in every year. So we are looking at that number to be about $3.8 million. We are also paying close attention to money for our instructional equipment and maintenance because there's $40 million in the state budget for that. Peralta's share, that is about $600,000. And then lastly, which is important, and I think I talked about this at the last board meeting, is that the STRS, we should be paying for 1920, 8.1, I mean, 18.1% for our share of the STRS cost. They have dropped that to 16.7%. And if you recall at the last board meeting, I said that the state chancellor's office is suggesting that the district should use that difference to set aside for a rainy day because at one, at some point in time, our contributions would go back up to 18% or maybe even greater. And so for two years, the rate is going to be less than what it was, what it was predicted or what was written in the law earlier. And so we should be looking at, how can we save some of that and so that when things get bad or things get worse than what they are now, we at least have something to fall back on without infringing upon our unrestricted general fund, new money and et cetera. One of the previous speakers did say that we had $4.5 million in frozen vacant position and $1 million reduction in discretionary fund. I like to say that a little different. We reduced our budget by $4.5 million in 1819. We are reducing our anticipated budget by another $1 million in 1920. And we did take, well, half of that $1 million came out of the district office services or the cost that we accumulate in the district, in the district office. A half a million dollars came from the colleges. And of course, that was on a presentation that we did at the last board meeting. So that is still standing. The 4.5, I mean, the $5.5 million has been reduced from the budgets and that is one of the things that put us into a positive position to where we got our ending fund balance and we can predict a solid ending fund balance going on into the future based on what we know. We also estimated the parcel tax to come in at about, at about $8 million. And according to staff, we think this is the seventh year, we will have parcel tax and we're looking at that to be about $8 million. And of course, the college, the California College Perma's has $45 million to expand that program and its need to cover second year of attendance for first-time, full-time students. Our share of that is estimated to be about $7 million, I mean, about $700,000, I'm sorry. Now, when I said that earlier, that if the assumptions are sound and we know our limitations, any accountant can turn that into a budget. And when we look at the analysis of turning those assumptions into the revenue stream that we are anticipating, we'll see where our dollars are really coming from. Out of $151 million that we have predicted for revenue, 37% is coming from property taxes, 27% is coming from state apportionment, another 11% is coming from EPA, Educational Protection Act, that's, I think that was Prop 30 if I'm not mistaken. And then we got some other local revenue and mandated cost claims and et cetera. But the lion's share of our revenues is coming from basically three sources, state apportionment, and that's based on the former years and et cetera, property taxes, and of course, that's based on the assessed valuation of the county of Alameda, or the district portion of the county of Alameda because our share does not cover the whole county. And of course, the EPA money. Now, if we look at the expenditure assumptions, let me pause here for a minute. It is my understanding, now, I was not here naturally, but it's my understanding that there had been discussions on some of these assumptions, if not all of them, among the participatory governance group. Now, whether or not there was total agreement on these assumptions or not, I really don't know. But it's my understanding that there were discussion about some of these assumptions. The other issue is that to properly do a budget and spend the appropriate time on the assumptions so that we can build the numbers whenever we know what the dollar amounts are, we should, really should be looking at these assumptions starting in fall. If we wait until spring, or we wait until February or Oct, I mean, February or March to start this for the first time, that is too late. We really should be building out these assumptions in the early fall and changing them as situations change so that whenever we do find out the amount of money we want to get, which is the first, the governor's proposal, then we get the May revise and et cetera, we can easily change those assumptions through dialogue and et cetera so they best define our values in the budget statements. So that would be my, one of my recommendations, is that we look at calendaring this such that we can start this process much earlier. And I know we are planning to have a retreat, I think it is in August, to basically discuss some of these issues and hopefully we can come up with a calendar that will make sense so that we can approach this in a logical way and we will not have anyone who will come and say, "Well, there was no participat," no participation in defining these budgets." And again, the budgets are the assumptions. On the expenditure side, again, the step and column increases, that is estimated to cost us about $1 million. The public employee, which is PERS, now, I talked about STIRS, but PERS is going to cost us an additional $700,000 because the rate is going from 18.1 to 20.7. We also have the state teachers' contribution. Well, at first, they said it was going to be 16.3, so they'll have now increases it back up to 16.7. So that's costing us another $200,000. The DSPNS program, we have to put about a million and two into that program every year and that's called a maintenance of efforts. That goes back to 1977 when the DS program was the first approved and et cetera and that the colleges had to contribute part of the unrestricted general fund. And then after Prop 13 passed, that constituency was able to codify in law that we would have to keep making that contributions out of general fund as long as the program exists. And so our contributions to the DSPNS program, we call it MATCH. Our MATCH to the DSPNS program is about $1.2 million. The OPAD debt service payment, we underpay about $4.3 million and that's out of the unrestricted general fund. And that is for both interests and penalties on certain portions or certain parts of the OPAD program. We also contributed $250,000 to the OPAD trust that has been set up, the irrevocable trust that was set up earlier. We are submitting, we're budgeting $400,000 to contribute to the program we call SELF, which is the Self Insurance Program. And there's a real history behind the SELF program. I won't waste your time talking about that. But there was a time when community colleges and K-12s could not about that, but there was a time when community colleges and K-12s could not buy insurance on the open market. And that's when we, that's when we, community colleges and K-12 systems, that's when we defined our own insurance program and start funding it ourselves. And that really is what the SELF program is about. And we have found that we have done better funding it ourselves and investing the money and covering our own losses than we would, than we have been doing if we go out on the open market with the insurance program, with the insurance clarity. There is also a 7.5% of the payroll is contributed to the OPAD program. So that's 7.5% from the unrestricted, unrestricted general fund for, for, for the payroll charges that is contributed to the OPAD funds to help fund that or build up those balances. And at the utility budgets, which is a little dangerous at this time, we're really going to revisit this, but we are budgeting the utilities at the actual level from the, from the 1819 year. What we actually spent in 1819, that's what we are budgeting for the 1920, I mean, 1920 year. There have been some problems in the utilities, is that there has been times that they have been underbudgeted and that when we have to make the adjustments, if we look at those line items, we will probably see some underspend, some overspending, I'm sorry, in the utilities area. We have not heard of any significant increase thus far in the rates and et cetera, but we can have an increase because of usage. And so, like with the hot day we have today, I'm sure that where we got air conditioning, they are humming to late in the evening, and that affects our electric bill, how much water we use, that affects our East Bay mud bill and et cetera. So we conservatively budgeted at the same amount we spent in 1819, but we may have to adjust that in the final, in the final budget. And here's something I really want us to pay attention to or to be, be aware of. Out of the total expenditure budget of $151.7 million, 82% of those dollars are going towards salaries and benefits. 82% of our unrestricted general fund budget is dedicated to salaries and benefits. Salaries is 51% and benefits is 31%. The benefit percentage is almost as large as the salaries themselves. And so, the, and this is not unusual in community colleges. Some districts, that number is higher than 82%. There are some that is less than 82%, but, but on the average, is that the costs of benefits and salaries usually runs in the high 70s or low 80s in a community college If we look at the, the chart here, is we'll see that our discretionary budget is only 14%. So that means after we handle salaries and benefits, 14% of the budget pays for everything else. Only 14%, and I mean, that's everything else, including some that are not direct expenses. Some, it has to do with transfers to the OPAD or transfers to other parts of the, of the operations, contribution to the DSPNS and et cetera. So that 14% doesn't mean we have a lot of money to spend. It means that only 14% of our unrestricted general fund goes to something other than salaries and benefits. Now, when we put all of this together, this is what our number graph appears to be. And again, everything is always so small. We got, we have to do something about this. But when we look at it, I mean, those charts before said our revenue is going to be 1.5, 151 million. That is what this graph shows for 20, for 1920. It also says our expenses are going to be 151 million, and that is what this graph shows. Now, one thing interesting about this graph, there was a question raised at the prior board meeting, and we was looking at this, what we call a surplus of about $3 million. And the question was, why are we holding on to that? Why aren't we spending that to try to generate FTS and et cetera? If you look at the 1920 budget portion, you will see that we are spending that, that it is our plan that we use all the budget money that we have allocated or that we have estimated, we use it all for our programs and et cetera. And in fact, according to this chart, we are coming in at a deficit of about $286,000. Now, that will change. All the budgets we have will not be spent necessarily where it is. Some will be spent more than what we have. And that's because, for instance, we may have classes that do not meet. We may not be able to hire faculty for a certain position or for certain programs, but we have money in the budget for it. So there will always be a difference between actual and budget. So by the time we get to the end of the year, rather than having a $286,000 deficit, we may have a surplus. I do not believe the surplus will be $3 million because that $3 million is a combination of a lot of things that happened, i.e. the reductions of the budget, i.e. to try to put the budgets back in tilt to where we, we would have that 10% reserve and et cetera. But as you see, that from the 1920 document, that we need and we're going to spend and we are planning to spend every dime that comes into this district for the unrestricted general fund. And so, we do not anticipate a large surplus, but we do anticipate to have 11% reserve. And that is keeping in line with the board's goal that we have no less than 10%. So if you look at 18 and 19, we're estimating that we'd have a 11%. You look at 1920, we're estimating that we have 11% reserve. And that basically is what we had reported to the AACJC in the, in the five-year financial document and et cetera. So we're in better shape than we thought we were back in February, but we still are not totally out of the woods. We have to carefully monitor this, and we have to wait on the state to tell us exactly what, what our revenue sources are going to be. Going back to our salaries and benefits, this chart talk about salaries and benefits by location. And as you see, of the, of the total that we spent on salaries and benefits, the distribution is, is about what we would expect. Laney College has the largest distribution of about 29%. College of Alameda, I think, has the smallest of about 15%. 16% at Berkeley City College, 17% at Merritt, and 20% at the district office. Those, those are units that we identify as the district office. This chart, you have to look at it carefully because if you add up the percentages, you instantly see it's greater than 100%. That's because this chart is depicting the percentage within the college. So in the case of Merritt, we're saying that of Merritt's total budget, 89% is going to salaries and benefits. And you just circle it all the way around. So don't try to add up the figures and say, add up the percentage and say it's greater than 100% because it's not depicting a 100% chart. It depicting 500% charts, if you, if you think about it that way. The same, the one thing that this story tells, as we showed earlier, is that our significant part of our money is being spent on salaries and benefits. If we look at the discretionary, now, this, this chart is talking about the amount of discretionary at each location, and I know the first thing that would come to someone's mind, why does the district administration center has 56% of the discretionary money? That is misleading. And the reason it is misleading is because many of the things we identify as district administration, really a college-wide operation. The debt, the IT department, the HRO department, even though the HRO department is down here, but they handle the HRO services for all, all locations. The grounds, if you will, the plant maintenance and et cetera. So when we really look at those individual units, we'll see that, that the services that we are identifying as district administration center, really, many of the police services, for instance, are really college-wide operation or district-wide operations. And there's a chart in the book itself that really depict each one of those items that we had named. In fact, there's a whole list of things. Information technology, financial services, general services, facility operation purchases, international education, employee relation, et cetera. Whole lot of items that we identify as district office or district administration center really are for the benefit of the whole district, including the services at the college. Now, we could distribute those out at the particular college, and that's where the issue about centralization versus decentralization is coming into play. And looking at reorganization, maybe some of those, some of that may change. But right now, we identify it as a, as a centralized services, serving all of the colleges and the district office. Debt service, oh, have I gone, yeah, district, shouldn't let me pass by that. This was the item we was talking about of, of items that is not going directly into the classroom. $4 million, I talked about earlier, is going to the OPAD for debt services. DSPNS, $1.2 million. Property liability, $400,000, and of course, the OPAD contribution is $250,000. And so, we have this item called debt services in the other outgo, and that's a line item in the budget, and this is what make it up. The end in fund balance, and this is just a graph to show over time where our end in fund balances has been and where we are predicting it to go. If we look at the 2016 and the 2017 years, we was below the 10%. All of the other years that has depicted on these graphs are greater than 10%, including 2019, I mean, including 1819 and 1920. Another question that came up was, what is the amount of our student receivers? What portion of them have been written off? And then none of, none of them have been written off, has been reserved for, and how much of it is in our end in fund balance? Well, of the $11.7 million of students receivers that we have on the books, 7.9, 7.9 million is reserved as bad debts. So we have written that portion off as bad debt. We have not thrown them away because we still hope to collect them, and we still are collecting on some of them. But they have, there are not another end in fund balance. Only 3.7 million is included in our current end in fund balance. And why do we keep any of them in our end in fund balance? Well, generally accepted accounting principles and the state budget and accounting manual will not allow us to write them all off because they know that some of them will be collected. In fact, we collect, we collect some every day. So the system that we have of writing them off is we look at the, the balance of the account and we look at how old they are. If they're over one year old or two years old, we write off a certain amount. If they're three years old, we write off a certain percentage and et cetera. And that is per board policy. I believe it's 6300, and I believe the, the procedures is 6302. And it's clearly defined how you wanted us to write these off over time. And I'm assuming that that was also in a way forced by, by findings of the auditors because they're saying you have all these items on your books, you have not written any of them off, you're not going to collect them all, and you have to come up with a procedure or process to write off. And so, we use the board policy, 6300, to define what portion of these we write off each year. And of course, to go back to where, where we were before, this is our unrestricted general fund in terms of dollars and the areas that we're expecting them to be spent. And this shows the picture of starting with 1718 all the way over to 1920. I could sit here and talk about this budget all night, but I will, will end and say I'm willing to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And yes, we are going to have lots of questions, I'm sure. We'll start off with trustee Brown to my far right.
Thank you very much, Dr. Harrison, for the presentation. My question is, I would say would be more so, as we're appropriately supposed to do, direct it through the chancellor. We have heard pieces of the components of the overall unit, that is, the Peralta budget and the Peralta and the different portions. We've heard about enrollment, and we've heard the outcomes or the results of our enrollment through apportionment funds and through the compilations of the budget. So we've heard the different pieces. And we've also seen through the, this presentation on the budget, particularly slide eight, that our revenues are generally 27% apportionment, 37% property tax, which means that we're really relying on the, the voters that approved the parcel tax that we fought so hard last year to pass. So what this says to me is that we have different pieces that are all components of the same, of the whole, but we're looking at them in separation, which we have to do in order to, of course, pass the budget. But it underscores the fact that we're relying on a double tax, if you will, in order to fund our operations. And with our enrollment, we have made our projections compliant with our past performance, which is not where we want it to be in the first place, which means that our condition exists continuously or perpetuates where we have fewer people coming into our college, yet we still have a large number of people who haven't completed their educational goals. So what I think we are seeing today is that we have created ways to solve pieces or to do the administrative paperwork that is necessary to comply with the law, but our underlying problem has not yet been addressed, which is, and, and so this is an overall, and we have the CBT report, which tells us that we're losing students, which tells us that our demographic is generally 24 to 35. We have all of the information pieces that we've gotten, and it's nine o'clock, right? We've gotten everything from the last couple of hours to tell us what our problems are. The going forward would be changing our trajectory to not use the collective intellect to address the pieces, but to actually figure out how we are going to engage the community and to have our classes suit our students and to find out why our students are not enrolling or are leaving. It all comes back to the same thing that we've been talking, sort of talking around but have not yet created a plan to address. We have an enrollment management plan, but that is not a community engagement or outreach plan. Those are two entirely different things. So my question is, what part of this analysis process is going to be the solution to the underlying problem, which is the community needs us and we're not yet there? And that's not to Mr. Harrison because I have asked you to solve the riddle of the universe. I'm asking the overall team through the chancellor.
Yes, I appreciate that a whole lot. Clearly, this is something the board has been concerned about for a while because it's, you've got it inserted in my goals, and one of the big goals has to do with moving the needle around enrollment here at Peralta. I think that the CBT report provides a lot of strategies that are best practices and that will be implemented. It is my expectation that the colleges, under the leadership of the presidents, will implement critical strategies that will lead to improved enrollments in this district, including those enrollments that would be coming from specific target groups, all a part of our different diverse communities, and that's going to be a huge effort. We also need to have a marketing plan, a marketing and outreach information plan coupled with the enrollment strategies. But even at the end of the day, when we But even at the end of the day, when we've done all the marketing, and we've gone to the churches, and we've gone to the mosque, when, after the end of the day, the bottom line is still what's happening on the ground, Trustee Brown. And the ground is here, scheduling, holding the line on the number of students in terms of class size, ensuring that students on the front end are getting in, working with student services. It's really here, because we'll have the funding to do the big picture stuff, but once they come, what are they going to have? And we don't want to be accused of false advertising. So, it's going to be a lot of strategies created in this upgrading of the enrollment management plans. Because the current enrollment management plans, as hard and as much work has gone into them, it's just not moving the needle fast enough, and that is a critical problem. It's not only been cited by CBT, but it's been cited by ACCJC in particular. So, I think the answer, the big picture answer, is an improved, robust, robust enrollment management plan that includes marketing outreach as well.
Excuse me, Dr. White. May I make one clarification comment? And it won't change the dynamics, but the parcel tax is not included in these numbers.
So, the property taxes you're talking about on page?
Yes, that's...
Seven or eight.
That's the secured property taxes, but that's not the parcel tax.
Okay, so that's not the parcel tax. That's the parcel tax that comes through that is the assessment that's on the houses outside of the parcel tax.
That's correct.
Okay. And so, one other question. The part about the discretionary expenditures on page, where is this? Page 11. No, it's not that one. It's the one where it shows the portion, the salary and benefits. Okay, it's page 10. So, what that one says to me is that, and this is just sort of the overall big picture, and I'm still like talking to the chancellor. What it says to me is that there are colleges that have figured out how to offset their costs. There, some of y'all are really scrambling. Some of y'all are real hustlers, which is reflected positively here. Some of the colleges need some more support and some help in utilizing opportunities for contract ed or for civic center renting facilities. When we do this overall plan, part of the community engagement, part of the thinking outside of the box, part of the making sure that we're utilizing the resources that we have, including the facilities, is making sure that we're using every opportunity to make the colleges available to the public. And I could see that reflected on page 10 as well. So, that's, so those are my two observations. And that we may want, that would actually have to be in our overall strategy. And there was a comment made earlier about COLA being used not for cost of living adjustments, but to fund the salary schedule. And I understand that that is what we do when we're in a difficult situation where there's not a lot of funding. But we're heading for, it appears as though we're projected to have a recession, which is going to make it really difficult even to get that COLA. So, we have a somewhat of a window that will allow us to throw that hail mary pass, to make that three pointer. Who made the, Nikki Haley's gone, she made the... If we're gonna, if we're gonna, we're gonna have to do the three from the side in order to make sure that we don't end up with the short end of the stick, because that then leads for decreased resources, decreased funding to be able to pay the faculty and staff who are going to be here to make sure that it's not false advertising. There's a narrowing window, and we can't, we're not doing that by changing the target. You know, the goalpost has to stay where it is. We can't be moving the goalpost or moving the length of the rough or the course. So, I guess that's a point towards strategy. There's not much time, but that has to be paramount, because all things lead back to the money. And we can't serve our communities appropriately without the money. We can't have the faculty and staff here to operate without the money. But we're not getting the money by shuffling around, by workarounds. So, we're going to have to dive in. And it's uncomfortable, not everybody necessarily is comfortable doing those things, but that doesn't mean that those who are can't do with the support of the institution.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. Trustee Reese?
I'm wondering if it's going to be easier for me to direct my questions to him, because there are five and they're kind of specific to the budget, unless you want me to do triangulate again? No? Okay. Thank you for this budget. I think that there were a few things that you had done that I appreciated. And one, under revenue, changing the, from trans or transfer ins, which it had been in the past, to other financing sources. And at the very bottom, under expenses, separating debt service and other outgo, that just clears it up for me a bit. I have five questions, as per usual. The first question that I have has to do with, I'm looking at the 2019-20 tentative budget that is in the book, in the budget book. And I know that usually, when we submit to the chancellor's office, we submit the adopted budget and the audited, right? But in January of 2019, we had the amended budget. And then, on the five-year ACCJC report that you had put forth, it was the amended budget as well as the adopted, as well as the current audited. So, it's there, but it's not located here. And I'm okay with that, except two parts to that first question. One, I just want to make sure that all of the information that we approved on the amended budget does not get lost in the shuffle somehow. And quite specifically, the area that I'm looking at is in the amended budget from 2019, the, there was an additional 2 million in swap and debt interest payments. And I'm looking at our budget here for 2000, I'm looking here, actually, at our estimated actuals. And it is not included there. Quite specifically, the debt service and the other outgo adds up to 6,184,000. But if you look at the ACCJC report that you put forth, the other outgo that you put, that has been placed there and submitted to ACCJC is 8,184,000. And so, I think I'm a bit confused in terms of where that 2,000, 2 million, not 2,000, 2 million. So, that's a huge number. Concerned that that just kind of disappeared. That's my first question.
It disappeared because it's not reality. There was the estimation that was back in February period, I'll say February time period. I know it was before I arrived, is that in estimating the numbers, they had estimated that our debt service was going to be $2 million more than it actually is. And so, that $2 million has come out because that is not a requirement. We do not have a $2 million debt service over and above what we've showed in here. There is a schedule that shows every, how much interest we pay per year, who pays it, how much debt we have to pay per year, who pays it, what the fees and et cetera are. And that, and putting that together earlier this year, it was $2 million overstated.
Okay, to that end then, as I look at the ACCJC report that you did submit, or that the budget department or the finance department submitted collectively with you there, it is still on the ACCJC report, 8,184,000.
Yes, live and document, we are finding items, we have been finding items, and we'll continue to find items in this budget every day as we look at it and examine it. And that $2 million item was just found last week, just before we put this budget together. Because when staff submitted to me, I am the new person in town, and I started asking real questions. What is this? Where it come from? Why do we have to pay it, et cetera? And we discovered that it was $2 million more than we had to pay in estimates.
Again, to that end, is there a mechanism of some sort that allows for communication when you have these major findings? Because it's not just $2,000, and it's not just $200,000, it's 2 million. And so, that seems like if I didn't kind of, if we didn't comb through, that could have been easily glossed over. And I just want to make sure that there's some kind of mechanism or communication when something as significant as that is found out. Because all of our other documents, I see that there's a little kind of question in your mind, but all of the other documents keep on going back to that 2 million. It's in our documents here. And so, it is no longer on this 2019-2020 tentative budget. So, if there are significant findings, I guess I would suggest that that's communicated out. Right, right. Okay, that's the first question. The second question, I'm looking at general services, and general services for, general services for 2019-20 include security, police services, et cetera. And as I look at the general services on page 15 of the budget book, it's listed two times in centralized services as well as district office services. And those two amounts together do not, or are a little bit over our current, if we were to go in this particular direction, 4.1 million Alameda County Sheriff's Office. So, unless there's another place where the sheriff's contract, if we did go in that particular direction, would go, I don't see it allocated in the 2019-20 tentative budget. On page 15 of the budget book?
Right.
Yes, yes. So, for the general services, there is an area where police services or security services are under general services. And you have the general services listed in two areas, which I understand, because one is district office and the other one is centralized service. And so, just a note, if it's hard to, I know that it's hard to go back and forth, that if there is, if we do go forward with a contract, such as what we've typically gone forward with, something along the lines of 4.1 million, I don't see it in the area of general services where security and police services usually would go under.
Let me, let, let me get back to you with the report on exactly what is in those two numbers.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Because it was built on the general services. We built ABC Security Plaza Sheriff, we built 3.5 million.
Okay, 3.5.
And the contract is 4.5. And I've built 1.5 million in the finance, because I didn't know you got to sign it. So, I have that 1.5 in the finance as a mis�程度, so I have that, it's already budgeted. I'm just waiting for your signature to move it back to general services.
Okay, and then again, another notation.
So, we can give you the details, I can give you the details on what we budgeted on finance. You will see we added 1.5 million when I saw that this would go back to the board.
If we go forward.
I added 1.5 million, just security in the finance, so nobody use it until you got to sign it, and then I will reallocate it to the general services to pay the sheriff.
Okay, again, a note, okay.
And then, the 2 million I want to add, for the 2 million that you were talking about, we had in the revenue side, 11,650,000. And then, we had 8,184,000 in the expense side. So, it's in and out, there is no impact. The reason we took it out, my former vice chancellor wanted to put it that way, and I said, no, we shouldn't do it that way. It should be zero there, because we're already paying 4.3 million from the general fund. There is no money coming from the trust, 94, to pay that, because we're already paying it. So, it was, it was in and out, and it doesn't, it wasn't making sense. So, that's why when I explained to my boss, why are we putting this 2 million? When he asked me, and I explained to him why we did that, it didn't came from me. And I said, this should be out, because there is no impact, we're not paying that, we already included. It's paid by the, by the, by the trust.
Okay, and then to that, may I ask a question? Follow up to that end then, if there is a 2 million coming in, I don't see it on the outgo. Where else did it go, or did it not happen?
The 2 million that is, so, when you see the revenue, you have 11,650,000, right?
Right.
That 2 million was pretending coming from the trust fund.
Pretending?
Meaning, meaning that we transferred, what I mean, it came from the trust fund
Right.
to pay those, 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 those debts.
Right.
Right? So, we do a transfer in and transfer out. Transfer out from the trust fund, transfer in for the general, 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 uh, uh, unrestricted fund, general fund, right? But we don't have to do that. But my former boss wanted to do that, we said, we don't have to do that. So, that's why we took it out. The number didn't change. We had our 4.3 million that we have to pay from the general fund. And we have the debt schedule that, well, we're going to pay from the 69 O-PED. And we have also, the debt schedule is coming from the trust fund. So, what I'm saying, if you understood what I'm saying, there were no, we didn't need to do that transaction.
Yes, and I just want to make sure that it didn't go in and never come out. Because if you say that it completely was erased because it didn't have to happen, I just want to make sure it didn't come in and then somehow not go back out. In, transfer in, other outgo.
That's correct. And I think your suggestion is very good, because in the budget book or in our descriptions, I keep saying the word notes. There's some items that should have notes in terms of explaining what's going on in that particular category.
Yes, okay. And then, I have many more, but I'll do one other question, if I just may. So, on page, on slide 10 of the presentation that you just completed, as we look at the pie chart, you have, do you have it with you? As you look at the pie chart, you have the 88.91%, 91.32%, for example. What are those of?
Oh, that's not, that's the...
Of what?
That's of the total budget.
Of the, of the college's total budget?
No, that's, yeah, of the district total budget.
So, 91.32%?
Of salaries and benefits.
But each college has a different percentage, and it equals more than 100%.
Okay, okay, we're looking at a different slide.
Oh, slide 10.
All right, remember I said, well, I changed the page numbers on some that I have. But when we said, remember I said that this is, you take Laney?
Right.
That should, in another way of presenting that, that would be a pie chart by itself.
Right.
Now, it'd only be talking about Laney. So, that 91.3% is 91.3% of Laney's budgets going into salaries and benefits.
Okay, that makes sense. So, the follow-up question that I have to that is, I looked at all the individual colleges, and I looked at the full-time academic, academic admin, other faculty, part-time academic, classified salary, and the fringe benefits for each of those colleges. And I added it up, and each of the four colleges, the amount that's there is not what the actual total is. Meaning, each, there's a, let me just give you one example. So, if we go to the College of Alameda, 1 million, what is there is 19,779,088. And the actuals, when summed up, is, equals 17,849,088. But when I did it all around the pie chart, each college had a delta of 1,933, 900, 1,930,000. And what's interesting is, when you go to the district administrative center, the amount that's there, 25,104,609, is less than the sum, which is 32 million. And all of the deltas of the four colleges equal the delta with what is stated and what it actually is.
The difference is that we decided to do, we took the debt services 20% across the board. If you look at the debt services, it's part of the general fund. So, when we're doing this chart, we said, let's take 20% across the board for the colleges, for each college, and for the districts. That's why the delta difference is 1.3 million, 1,300 something.
No, 1.930 for each one.
Yeah, 1.930, if you multiply six...
Four.
We have also the retiree benefit, we average on the salary. The retiree benefit is 9.6 million.
Is, I'm sorry, is what?
The retiree benefit.
Is?
9.6 million.
Okay.
We take across the board 20% for the district and for each college. So, we can come up with a rationale, instead of putting the 9.6 million only on the district, because we're paying the retiree benefit, and the retiree benefit is the entire, the entire institution. So, we took 20% for each, for the, for the, for merit, for Laney, for, and for the district. If you take 6.950 times 20%, that's what we did.
So, what you're saying is that all of these numbers, 20% is, it's all across for the district as well as the four colleges?
Correct.
What I'm saying is that the four colleges, the delta there... What I'm saying is that the four colleges, the delta there of 1.9, if you add them all up, the district administrative center, what's stated, is actually less than the actual sum of what the district is using. And so that is, your explanation does not speak to that.
We can give you the details. Oh, we'll build this with the calculation.
Okay.
Let us, let us get to your report and clarify that.
Yes, because this one's particularly, particularly bothersome.
I, I understand what we were trying to show, but I had, I had problems with that concept myself. Is that, well, one of the things I was recommending is that if we had five units, if we wanted to do a pie chart, we show five pie charts. And each pie chart would be 100%. As you have here, if you add these up, this will come far more than 100%, because it does not represent 100%. It represents 100% within each unit. So let us get you, let us, let us get you a clarification statement on that, and we'll send that out to, to the board members.
Okay, thank you.
That was your question two. You said you had five.
Oh, that was my question four. You're not counting.
I thought it was three.
I, do you really want my question five?
Yeah.
Okay. Or does, or somebody?
Keep going.
Okay. So question five is on page 32, I believe. The measure A, on the budget book, budget handbook.
32?
The measure B, I'm sorry, the parcel tax.
33.
Is this, oh, no, 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 no. Yeah, 31, 32, maybe, yes, 32. It was for the measure A bond.
Okay.
Okay. I'm looking at the expenses, books, supplies, and services. And if you just look across the line from left to right, we did 1.5 in 2017-18 for that category. In 2018-19 adopted budget, we did 1.1, or we were aiming for 1.1. Our estimated actuals for 2018-19 was 900 and is 992, but for the 2019-20 budget, 8.5 million. I, I, yeah, what is it?
We have that detail.
Thank you.
We have that detail on, on measure A. Page 32.
I think that was estimated that the project they're going to do on, on 1920 is going to be $8 million.
Uh, what, for what?
For measure, measure A.
Wait a minute, no, no. What is $8 million for?
Wouldn't that be run rate of the...
Oh, this is estimated what you're going to spend for construction.
Spend, correct.
Okay, yes, yes. And, and those numbers would change, those numbers would change in the adopted budget, because Vice Chancellor Sada is still working out what the, what the project schedule list is going to be, and whether it's going to come out of measure A, or come out of measure G, and et cetera. And so when we come forward with the final budget, we'll have the numbers in there that would tie into that project schedule list, and the estimation that is coming out of their offices. So this is, this is, this is what we're proposing. Now, this is what we're thinking, is that it would be $8 million worth of projects that will be funded and started in 1920.
That's under the category of books, supplies, and services?
It's services. The name says book, supplies, but it's services. That's the way they, they used to do, they used to...
We can, we can give it a better name, so it is clear, but it really is capital construction. It'd be capital constructions. And part of it would be like, things like soft costs on the front, and et cetera. That would be the service portion of it. But it, but it is representative of what we had estimated at the time, that will be started in 1920 for the capital programs on the measure A.
Trustee Bella Reese, if I can address that. So I'll, I'll follow up tomorrow to confirm that, but I do believe it's what VC Harrison just mentioned, which is the services portion. We have a certain amount of soft costs that are associated with the project, but what I don't, what I need to check is why it jumped up in the final year. So we'll get, we'll get back to you tomorrow in writing. Thank you.
And if I could just add on, on to this, that particular question, when I look at these categories, what I don't see relative to the soft causes, costs, are additional costs related to legal, bond counsel, legal counsel directly related to the bond itself. And so it's, it's interesting that even the 20, under the 27-18 audited, adopted, and estimated, if you look across, it doesn't appear that we are incorporating and referencing that as a, as a categorical fund that is, that is attached to this funding. So it would be good to, to clarify.
Good feedback, and we will clarify for you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Weinstein.
So can we, can we just go over a little bit more the, the measure A bond summary? And I appreciate Dr. Sada for what, what you're talking about, but just so that I understand better, the, the beginning fund balance is 53 million, and the tentative budget for 2019-20 is 23 million, correct? So it goes down. But the, but you're spent, you're, but then up in the books and the services, it goes up.
So this is where we owe you some description about what is categorized in largely, I think the two differences obviously is books, supplies, and services, and I think it's largely services. And to address the comment earlier about including probably things like legal and other things that we have to pay for just to sort of run and manage a bond on an ongoing basis. And then the second question, of course, is why did it drop down from 17.8 to 13.2? And so, in the category of equipment and capital outlay. So again, I don't, I apologize for this evening not having that detail, but we'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
If, if I may, one other item on that, is that in this, in this program, we, we have about $23 million in cash. And this statement is saying that we will, we will fund the projects, we will bill out the projects, but we will not sell additional bonds, because we have all this cash. And so it's, actually, in theory, this, this fund, by the end of the program, should actually come to zero. Because as we have the cash stored up, we will spend it until we need more cash. And that's one of the things that I know Vice Chancellor Sada is working on, is do we have to sell bonds this coming fiscal year, and how much we will have to sell, so we do not get into a negative cash balance here.
And this is for, and measure A, where, where the voters voted?
Yeah, this is for measure A, that's great.
And also similarly for measure B, parcel tax? Page 27? Yes.
For measure B, we're estimating that we're going to receive about $8 million in the 1920 year, and we are also showing that we are going to spend about 18, but we have a beginning fund balance of 1,808. So really, what that is saying, we're only going to spend the new money we get in, because we are not going to spend deficit spend in that fund at this time. That may change, but that really is what that analysis is saying. We'll get eight, we'll spend eight. Eight million, we'll spend eight million.
And the, the fringe benefits move from 2 million in 2017 to 279,000 in 2019-20?
Yes, and that would be, that would really be a function of what the colleges are using the money for, and whether or not they're using it for staff, i.e. teachers, academic staff, or whether they're not. So the, the smaller the number of staff they use that money for, the less we have to pay in the benefits. And so they are probably putting it into program services, et cetera, and so the benefit cost will go down.
And the beginning fund balance actually goes up, from 217 to 220.
You're looking at the parcel tax?
Mm-hmm, beginning fund balance is here, and 2020 it's there. Yeah, on page 27, where the, it says beginning fund balance.
Under the 1920 column?
Yeah, under the 1920, it says 1,875,428.
That's the beginning, and the ending is 1,875,000. So we're saying that we're going to spend all of the revenue we receive, we're going to spend it, but we are not going to spend any of the fund balance.
Yeah, why would we have an end funding balance for parcel tax dollars that are completely dedicated to instructional uses? That, I think, I think that's the question. There's a question mark for many of, for, I think, myself and Trustee Weinstein about why there would even be an end fund balance, given that those dollars are to be used in instruction. And I mean, I think there are so many other questions about this, and the opening statement, I thought was really interesting in that VC Harris, you said, this, this budget is really a value statement, and I couldn't agree with you more. And right now, we are struggling, I know I am struggling, that we have not put enough thought, collaboration, to really feel that this represents a true value statement of the district at this point. I think when I look at the assumptions that were put in, when I think about the staff questions that they have about where and how the COLA is being rolled up into a stepping column, when I look at the reference to $4 million continuing to be, the, the language that we're using, that it's continued to be frozen, it's problematic, because if that, if those dollars were removed from this budget, we shouldn't be referencing a $4 million freeze in our assumptions if that was the case. So there are so many questions that I have unanswered right now, that will take us far into the evening than is able to be answered here. And so I would like to at least offer, and, and I don't want to miss also on my, the statement from Trustee Brown, in that as an institution that serves students, if we are not nimble, flexible, and quick in our delivery of services to our most needy community members who are in need of our services, if we continue to try to develop strategies that bring students to us here at this institution, we will continuously struggle with being able to serve our community properly, because we just can't. We cannot continue to do the same. And I know Trustee Brown and myself have hollered at the top of mountain tops about how we get, how we, how this district lives up to the value that even the community expects from us. And so this document, this budget here unfortunately falls short of a value statement that I believe has not been vetted properly through its participatory governance process. And there are so many different issues that I have with this. But again, I don't want to spend the night picking this apart, because it's, it's unfair. It's unfair to you, Dr. Harris, who came in and literally adopted this, this department, this department in progress, right?
Right.
And so it's unfair to, to do that to you.
I, I accept the responsibility, so, but may I, may I make one comment about the, about the parcel tax? Parcel tax, like any other tax, the assessor will send tax bills out, but we don't know exactly how much we're going to collect. So if we say $8 million is what, what we're anticipating, and we give $8 million to the colleges to spend, and we only receive 7.5, then we're in the hole. So I'm certain, I'm almost certain that the allocation was less than what was expected, and we may have gotten more than what was expected. So that's why you get the difference.
Yes. And what I'd like the Chancellor to really hear about the parcel tax is, is not so much about, and, and thank you for that.
Sure.
Thank you for that. It's not so much about, you know, the process and how the money is received, it's really about the commitment that we made to the voters on where we would spend these dollars. And we see significant shifts from faculty to part-time faculty to classified staff. There, there doesn't seem to be any reasoning to why, and if there is, that rationale hasn't been shared with this board. And it, it's just not, it's not clear, it's not apparent to us.
What I'd like to do, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go, go ahead.
Is it okay?
Yes, please.
I would like to have the responses to the trustees who posed the questions, so that they get the clarity and clarification they're requesting. And I think at this point in time, because we need to have a tentative budget passed, that while you're waiting for your answers, which will come, that you could postpone your decision till the 25th. That would be the last time you'd be able to consider the tentative budget. But at least the questions you've posed, you would have had a full response to that.
Thank you for that, Chancellor. And if there are, we, we definitely have more questions, so I'd like to, Trustee Gonzalez, please.
Thank you. Gosh, this has been an interesting meeting. My questions would be less granular and more, more conceptual. And I want to, I want to start with the set of assumptions. I, I like President Benioff, I'm uncomfortable with the assumption that COLA is designated to pay for that particular thing. We've got all sorts of increases in the district, and then to say, oh, well, the, the COLA is going to go for stepping column. Well, I, you know, I mean, that's, that's an assumption, but it's as much of a political statement as it is anything else, because we have increases, that, there were other increases that you, that you pointed out in the budget. You didn't say, well, we're going to put COLA on that. And so I, I'm not comfortable with adopting a budget that designates COLA for that particular thing. And I'll just say, it, it partly it's a value question for me.
Statement is absolutely on target. And, and again, this, this is a process of where several people are doing writings on this. That, that statement is correct. We should not have specifically said COLA is going to step in column increases, because COLA is going to any increase we had in the budget. And so your, your statement is absolutely right, and if I was rewriting it now, I would write it totally different. And, and that's all I can say.
Okay, thank you.
For the President.
There's another set of...
He's calling for the President.
Madam President, it's now 10 o'clock, and I'd like to move that we extend the meeting for one hour.
No, 30 minutes, no, I'm not going to stay here any longer.
I'll, I'll second that.
We have, we have some things to cover here. If we don't, if we don't go the hour, we get out of here early, but otherwise, my guess is we're looking at another hour.
We have a second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
And because I've asked my colleagues to follow protocols and get their questions answered before we come here. There is a setup for that. So I view this as grandstanding. And I am sick and tired of staying here, going here later and later and later, because people do not follow protocol, which is to get your questions to the President, the President will get the questions to the Chancellor, the Chancellor will ask the questions, and then when we get here, we actually have a meeting. So no, I don't want to continue to do this meeting after meeting, because people like to hear themselves talk. We have very important things that we could take care of, but we're not taking care of anything here. And this has got to change. So no, we have a contract, we have people... So no, we have a contract, we have people waiting there, and we need to get to it. And we are not being fair to our audience when we continue to do this. So I'm going to ask you guys again for the 10th time, please follow protocol. You get your board packet 72 hours in advance for a reason, to get those questions answered. And you all continue to refuse to do that. And then we continue to go later and later and later. And there's just no reason for that.
Thank you, Trustee. We will continue for another hour.
Thank you. And I'll note that we did get these 72 hours, but there are like several hundred pages of documents, and some of these are quite, these are quite dense. And I have a full-time job. So when I get a document on Saturday, and I have a full-time job, I'm doing as well as I can manage. But let me continue. So this was sort of a question of values, and part of the challenge that I have, Vice Chancellor, and look, I know you're brand new to the district, coming back into the district, and I'm sure, you know, maybe it was different when you were the Chancellor and the CFO in prior years, but we have a shared governance process. And frankly, what I would love in a budget presentation that comes to us, a budget, you know, a tentative budget, is a tentative budget that's been signed off by the PGC and the PBC. If, if in fact, we're going to go through the process of shared governance, where we ask everybody to get expert on this stuff, then it'd be great if that's in fact what happened. Now, and I realize that it's complicated, and so is it possible that in the coming year, we would actually have a proposed tentative budget and then a final budget that would have actually gone through a shared governance process where the, the.
I can answer that.
Yes.
Okay, so this past spring, the PBC and the PGC agreed that we would hold a summit in August to discuss the PBIM system and the budget allocation model. And that's in line with the process going forward to start in the fall. We're going to revise it, update it, make it more meaningful. There were some recommendations in the CBT report around that. And with the new calendar built around that new process, it would show the participatory governance piece building into a tentative and final budget. Yeah.
I think the last thing that I want to just raise up is this question of productivity goals, which I, it's like this critical thing. We've got revenue, and we've got expenses. And I don't think we've ever hit the productivity goal of 17.5. And maybe it's time to just say, you know what, we're not going to hit that. We're never going to hit that. We're in a different world, we've got a different set of values, or whatever it is. But that that's not a realistic goal. So that's, that's part of it. And I want to just point out, I was just looking at, you know, when we think of productivity, we think of faculty members, you're teaching classes, and then the productivity is a class size. Productivity is also our, you know, our ability to do outreach and bring people in, which is good, but it also is a class size, and there is actually some value in having smaller class sizes sometimes. I want to note, though, that, that faculty members who are productive are generating all that revenue. And we've got other sources of revenue now. We've got equity, you know, we've got these pay-for-performance goals, right? So we're going to need to think about budgeting for that, and more explicitly budgeting for that, I think. But the other thing is, we need to then look at the so-called non-productive expenses. And so I'll just note that from 2008 to 2012, 2013, the total number of administrators in the district varied from 47 to 61. We currently have 80. Now, I understand that administrators, and this sounds so insulting to a room full of administrators, so I don't, I really don't mean it to be that way. But when we, when we look at productivity, we're saying, well, you need to be, you need to be more efficient, you need to be more productive. When we have 80 administrators in the district versus 70 or versus 60, there's a significant cost to that. And maybe part of our budget strategy that reflects a certain set of values is thinking about that cost versus the cost of instruction and what happens in instruction. And I think that that's something that I think the PGC and the PBC would be helpful in kind of parsing out, because then we really would set, you know, be like everybody's saying, yeah, we all agree, this is the number of administrators that we should have, this is the number of faculty, part-time, et cetera. So that was the only comments that I had at this, at this time. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Withrow.
You know, I've been a finance guy for more years than I want to talk about, and I appreciate the, what your presentation, I thought it was very good from the standpoint of making this operation come alive from within the perspective of the resources we have and how we commit them. None of this is easy. I think that unfortunately, the kind of environmental set where we have a string of people asking questions. But what it's doing is making it come alive, that this is what the public would like to know. And not that we're experts on any one of these things, but I think it is important. But I just want to convey to you that I appreciate your committing the time, energy, and intellect to making it come alive. This, and I, one of the things I really appreciate was the, when you emphasize the fact that this is a plan. This is a plan, it's not locked in. And as we all know, things occur at over time that, where an emergency requires money. It needs to be committed and covered and whatever, and you know, we don't sit around and debate whether we're going to cover it or not, we write the check. So anyway, thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Dr. Harris. Chancellor, I believe you have, I think that's it? All your, all your reports are done?
Oh, no, there's one more report.
We have one more report.
You won't want to miss this one. This one's pretty good. So, Madam President.
Can I just state for the record, because we just finished 3.1, correct?
Right.
I just want to get myself back on track. And we are now moving to 3.2, security presentation. Vice Chancellor Lisa Sada, yes.
Well, good evening, President Bonilla, members of the board, Chancellor White, presidents and members of the community. Thank you for the opportunity to return and to discuss security again with you. This evening, I plan to summarize the steps taken by the district thus far in reviewing the overall security needs. And what you've seen back on January 8th was actually two presentations. One provided by Vice Chancellor Whitaker, our HR leadership, and a third-party consultant. The first presentation was kind of a peer review of the Bay Area 10 community colleges. And the second one was an evaluation, kind of high level, of our public safety service. It was really providing a framework to go forward. The findings of the Bay 10 comparison survey was that seven of the 10 Bay 10 have peace officer standards in training. We call that post-training, which really means that they have certified police departments and/or contract with law enforcement agencies. Of the remaining three, two are headed by post-certified leaders, and one is headed by a chief public safety officer. The last point there is that most districts employ non-sworn security personnel in lieu of private security. So this is really what they consider a hybrid model. The consultant summary analyzed our security services and provided a framework, which was a three-step framework. The first step consisted of an assessment phase, which is yet to go forward. They plan, assuming that when we bring something back for your approval, it would be to review crime rates, response times, and really the quality of interaction and perception of the unsafe environment and costs. Of course, do a crime rate analysis, do interviews with the various community members, and then collaborate with our own sheriff's department and private security firms to evaluate solutions. Step two would be to develop the findings, and then based on those findings, they would come up with recommendations and provide an implementation phase. The consultant recommendations were that we have a three-part security model, and it shouldn't be changed without careful consideration of how one part affects the other, and that if we choose, and this is not a recommendation at this point, but if we were to choose to bring, to create an internal model, that we need to pay very careful attention to the costs. They provided at the time a very high-level overview and timeframe, six to nine months for a security contractor, nine to 12 months for police outsourcing, and 12 to 24 months to create a new internal police department. But regardless of the solution, we need time to work with you to analyze the right plan for the district. So I want to just kind of give you a high-level summary of our current security model. Again, it consists of three parts. We have the Alameda County Sheriff's Office, which provides security at Laney, COA, and Merritt with post-trained officers. ABC Security, which is a private security firm that provides limited security services on each campus, and the security guards, to be clear, are not post-certified. And then we actually have, and you may or may not be aware of this, our own campus safety aides. Those are our own students, and it's a faculty-run program that provides student workers as greeters in many locations, including this building. Before I move into this summary bullet point items, I also want to add that in addition to what you're seeing here in terms of the people's support, we also have a campus infrastructure support that we didn't address here in this presentation, but I can provide more detail on you. I did want to just provide you a little bit of feedback that on the blue light phones at Laney, all 14 phones are now operational. We had one phone that was added to the scope. That's on order, and we hope to get that done and completed by this summer. And at Merritt, we have six of our 10 phones are now operational, and we have a commitment from the vendor that by the end of the summer, we'll have the final four, four phones operational. So that would conclude what we called Phase 1 of the security infrastructure plan. Phase 2 would be a plan that would be developed with COA and possibly BCC, probably in a very limited role for, to cover those same services. And then with regard to exterior light upgrades, I just want to share with you that at Laney, most of the exterior lights are now replaced with LEDs, which are brighter. At Merritt, we're at about 50% plus completion. At COA, we've just begun there, we're probably at about 20, 25%. And at BCC, it's again, not an issue because it's an internal campus, and the lighting is really internal. So that's just kind of, wanted to pause and share with you the infrastructure side of that. So getting back to our overall security, in terms of the people's security, the first column there is the three service providers. Again, you have a three-part security apparatus. AXO provides, the second column is sort of a list of the resources and services that each of those groups provide and some notes. So I'll just kind of, I'm not going to read every bullet, but I did want to share that AXO currently is led by a lieutenant and sergeant. We have seven sworn officers that have, provide coverage between 6:00 and 11:00 p.m. five days a week. We have six technicians. This is largely the desk that takes the dispatch desk, which provides 24/7 dispatch services. They also provide a CLERIA crime stats and other services as needed. You see a list there. The private security firm provides on-campus presence. They, in the morning, arrive and lock and unlock our doors, and they call the police if needed. And we have 18 private security guards who do wear uniforms, but they are in unmarked cars. And then finally, the program that I just shared with you, our campus safety aides, there's 32 of them, and they are essentially student greeters at many of our locations. And they are tasked with calling the police if they need any sort of backup. So of course, the question is what were, this was what we were asked with before, what were the alternatives to the current model? And of course, we want to start by saying that any changes to the current model should reflect a data-driven approach. But there are public agencies that are post-certified, and we need to do our due diligence to bring forward any of those that might be able to provide services for us outside of Alameda County sheriffs. There are other private security firms, and we could consider different ways of procuring those services. In the previous procurement, it was considered to be a low-bid process, but because these are professional services, we could do a negotiated bid process where we're not obligated to take the low bid, which would allow us potentially to, you know, add other types of requests into the proposal. The other questions, of course, are, are there viable alternative public agency models? And does post-certification reflect the reality and the values of the district? I mean, these are the questions that we would like to work with, with you. And then finally, the student safety aides, you know, it's just a question of whether we want to maintain or expand the existing program. So we would suggest that these questions are asked after the consultant completes their study or as part of that process. So these are just another grid here of options, shared with you, the public agency RFP process. We're aware of AXO providing those services and possibly Yocan Police Department. The timelines for this would be three to six months for an RFP. That's a significant decrease in time compared to what the previous consultant suggested, but you know, it's all about how quickly we can put things together in-house. We would suggest creating what we call a value statement, and this is something we'd want to work with our board and our community with, which would allow us to sort of be very clear about what we're looking for in terms of our services. Other things to consider in that timeline is participatory governance process, the advertising and response time, and of course, the review and interview time. And then, of course, we'd bring that forward for board approval. We've listed some pluses and minuses here. I think they're pretty self-explanatory. You can feel free to read them and ask questions if you have. Just touching on the private security company, RFP, kind of shared with you already the issues around whether it's negotiated or low bid. Again, the same timeframe of three to six months. And then finally, internal police services, if we were to create our own police department, that's a 12 to 24-month timeframe, as suggested by the consultant. And again, you can see the pluses and minuses in that. So what are the next steps? Well, first of all, I want to share with you that when we shared this in terms of to meet the 72-hour Brown Act, we have, we were still working on the side letter with AXO, but that actually has been completed, and it is actually included in your, in the current agreement that is before you this evening. It's called Exhibit D to Amendment 2. And what we did is we wrote a couple-of-page letter with the assistance of our co-counsel, which we hope to address the five concerns that you raised at the last board meeting, and I'll quickly read them. Encourage constructive dialogue and a feedback loop. See if we can provide apprentice opportunities for students. We want to provide cultural competency training, community policing, and include an evaluation process and assessment. And what we're here to ask you for this evening is that the administration and staff, we need time to provide options for your consideration. So again, we're suggesting that we develop collaboratively a value statement through the participatory governance process. We'd like to suggest or recommend that we hire a consultant that can help us provide that assessment in Phase 1. And we're working, I'm working with VC Whitaker on identifying who an appropriate consultant would be, and we'll bring that to you shortly, depending on your actions this evening. And then we want to remind you that the contract with AXO does include a 90-day out clause. There was a fair amount of discussion about that last meeting, so I won't go into it again. But it's a mutual out clause which allows us as a district or the sheriff's office to say, hey, you know, we both want to terminate this and move on from there. So our recommendation this evening is to accomplish the above steps. We are recommending approval of the AXO contract extension for a period of one year, which does include this additional amendment and does continue to have a 90-day out clause. I'd be happy to take your questions.
Thank you, VC Sada. We will open up for questions. Do I have any speakers? Trustee Brown.
Thank you, VC Sada.
You're welcome.
For the presentation, and thank you to VC Whitaker, too. I know that you've been working on this and with the chancellor and our legal counsel. Everyone that had pitched in and helped address the requests that the board had made previously, I think maybe about four years ago, and most recently, two weeks ago. So what I wanted to ask was, what is the, or the anticipated mechanism to explore the items that are on the Appendix D?
So let me just flip back to those. Well, we have in the sheriff's document, it's actually in the contract now, and we are asking, there are a number of things that the sheriff's are asking, there are a number of things that the sheriff's office is already currently doing, which are now listed and spelled out in that agreement, and we would expect that they would implement those immediately. And if there are other ideas that would help meet those guidelines, we're looking for that feedback this evening, if, for some reason, they're not satisfactory.
One follow-up question. The, several members of the board have been going to the Department of Labor when we have conferences. There's a American Community College Trustees Conference in February in Washington, DC, which we use as an opportunity to go and seek grants for the, for the district and also to see if we could get apprenticeship money for particular programs. And so one of the things, one of the questions I have, I guess it's two-part. One, we are talking about a possible consultant, but we have a law enforcement academy, so we have people who are training people to be law enforcement providers. So I think that we might be able to use some of our internal capacity with regards to looking at alternatives, but also the, what we would need is the faculty input regarding the academic programs that would be apprenticeships, because we keep going back to the Department of Labor, and we, we have all the regulations, but we don't have the programs, but yet we have the faculty who could prepare the programs. So when I asked about the mechanism, part of my question was if we have thought about the internal resources that we already have, because we're in a position where we don't necessarily want to take on another consultant, but we want to maximize the resources that we already have. And so I'm wondering to what extent we could do that. I, I don't want to put anything else on anybody else's plate, but we have the experteer who are already training law enforcement. And part of the, the reason for asking for the apprenticeship is because we wanted to increase the opportunity for our own students in our own community to have these career opportunities, and then also the values of our community would be reflected in the graduates of that program.
Yeah.
Yes, we have academic faculty who could assist with operationalizing the apprenticeship piece and the mentoring piece and the academy piece. I'm specifically thinking of Mrs. Dixon, I think her last name is Dixon, up at Merritt College, and I think she could be a key partner in terms of pulling that piece together, operationalizing it, and that would be one of the mechanisms we could use.
That'd be great, because anything we do is going to circle back to them anyway, because we can't go get apprenticeship for a program that doesn't exist, and it's 10 plus one, so we have to go back to them. So, and we could start with them, that'd be great. And so we could see, and we could talk to them and see what their thoughts are before we think about engaging a consultant. We might be able to expedite the process and have a little bit more responsiveness. And the president of Merritt College is thinking about that.
Yes, I am. I, I guess the thing is, is that we train and prepare students for the academy, but we don't train them to actually be police officers. So we would have to look at that, and of course, Ms. Dixon is a police officer, and she could give some input to that. But my concern would be that we do not actually prepare them to be police. We prepare them to go into the academy. So that, that's a little bit of a difference, but wanted to be clear on that.
I might just, if I can build on your comments. One, there's probably a couple of things we can do. The other thing is, you should know as board, that there are a couple of programs that the sheriff's office already provides. They've already stated that'd be more than happy to provide what they call ride-alongs, as well as any sort of tours of the existing facilities. And I know that's a big difference from that to an apprenticeship, but to your point about just general exposure, that's already available to our students. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. The second thing is, I know that the cost of consultants is always a concern. I might suggest that in addition to working with our faculty, we could also, instead of having a consultant kind of take over the whole process, they could maybe just provide limited amounts of oversight, so that we don't, we don't miss any big pieces, because they would really be the expertise, but maybe be smart about how we use them, as opposed to turning over the whole, let's say, you know, if we do a survey and some other things, you know, we have obviously the ability to internally survey. It's just a question of, you know, what are the questions? So we may just, we could maybe do a first pass, again, with our own internal faculty, and then just have that higher-level kind of oversight that a consultant could provide. But then it wouldn't be like turning over the whole thing to a, a third party.
And one last question. The, there are students, high school students, that go through a, an internship program with the district attorney's office, and we, but with the prior chancellor, I tried to see if some of those students could then work with Peralta, just like we have the Law Academy, the two plus two plus three for, for people who want to be lawyers. There's also, there are other programs that we have here that lead to careers, and we could be working with these high school students that are already going through the DA's office. So again, it goes back to looking at what is already being done in the community and trying to incorporate that into what we're doing at the community college, because this is where our students come from, and this is where our service providers, our community servants come from. So I want to make sure that we keep this growth of this pipeline of talent open and that we are looking at the broader picture. Our job as, as trustees are to represent the people that live where we live. And I think that if we could focus on actually that grassroots, organic representation, that we could actually improve our service to our geographical area. So that's another reason why I think we need to go back to the people who are in the industry, who are faculty members, because they have, that is their, that's where their world is. And we could also do surveys or try and find, talk to our CTE people, because they'd be aware as well. So I just want to make sure that we are having a sort of comprehensive and sort of naturally-developed sort of process, because it doesn't have to be sort of technical and detached from what we already have.
Thank you for those comments.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. Trustee Withrow.
Just a quick follow-up to Trustee Brown. It seems to me that even though we're educating students at Merritt to be, they're going to an academy, this is an opportunity for them to experience what it means to be a public safety officer, to kind of make it come alive and what, what it is, and maybe make it come alive a little more in terms of the education that they're going through in at Merritt College, or any of the other colleges for, for that matter. And quite frankly, if I was on a selection committee for the academy, it would be positive in terms of somebody who had spent the time and committed the energy and to sample what the life of a public safety officer really involves.
Great. Thank you. And I think that was sort of one of the things that was shared by the sheriff's office, again, was these ride-along experiences and perhaps the ability to take tours of any of the facilities that are available. So we'll certainly look into that further. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Trustee Reese.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Sada. May I? Okay. My question, my question has to do with the timeline. Is there a way that we can be more specific in terms of our timeline, in terms of the completion of the consultant study, the participatory governance that you spoke about, as well as our participation? I just want to make sure that we don't actually forget what we're doing and that we stay clear on our paths and our timelines. And then the second maybe comment that you, that possibly might be integrated into the study or the presentation is the possibility of using Kahoot, as was suggested by John, as part of a viable complement to the model that we will be considering.
Sure. So on your first question about schedule, if, you know, assuming that we want to create a values statement, if that is sort of the preference of the board, you know, certainly we can begin the process of starting to set things up over this summer, but the hard work there would be done when the faculty and students arrive back in the fall. So that would kind of kick off in September timeframe. I think that it's reasonable to say that we could commit to a three-month schedule to put, you know, the surveys and some of the, some of that material together, so we'd be looking at somewhere around the end of the year. But a lot of that will depend on whether we're working with a consulting firm and kind of farming it out, or if we're trying to do it internally. So that's just sort of me speaking off the cuff. We would have to, we can come back to you, though, with a little bit more detailed plan in one of the coming meetings, based on, again, your feedback that we're receiving tonight.
One of the timeline markers that will appear in the side letter is December 19th. So by December 19th, we have everything done.
Includes the.
The assessment, the study, the value statement.
Right. But of course, that is assuming that we have the assistance of a pretty comprehensive consulting team.
Right.
If we do some of that in-house, which we're perfectly capable of doing, we just have to kind of look into the timeframes and schedules and availability of existing faculty members who, you know, are part of our team and things like that. But we can, we can come back to you with those two options.
Thank you for that. Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you for the report. A few, few things. On our three-part security service right now, it looks like the, you know, the sheriff's department, costs have gone up quite significantly over the last decade, and now we're looking at, I don't know, $4.1 something million. What is the cost of the private security that we employ, both at BCC and then elsewhere? And then what's the cost of the 30 campus safety aides? And how many people hours are we getting out of that?
Yeah, I couldn't give you the people hours numbers, but I can give you the overall cost. It's about $1 million a year for our security services, private security services, and about $300,000 for our campus security aides.
Okay.
Again, in round numbers. I also want to point out that in terms of the overall contract for the county, it is an hourly contract. So it is, our current year, our current total invoice is, is just under $3 million, about $2.9, but the allowance was $4.5 million. So we don't know yet, because we've only billed, I think, through January. We're still having a number of months to go. And then the second point is.
So it's fiscal year?
Yes, fiscal year.
Okay.
And then the 1920 projections that were provided as an estimate for your consideration is $4.1 million. But again, it's an estimate, and I, I would say in our history, if we look backwards, our average expenditure has been in the, in the $3.3 to $3.5 million a year. It's been pretty consistent.
Something that'd be really helpful for me, and maybe for the rest of the board, is kind of more comprehensive and more regular reporting on incidents. So we had somebody who came from, you know, the public, well, actually, a worker on, in district who talked about, you know, having been witness to a lot of incidences, including somebody being tased, et cetera. And frankly, I don't think in the almost 15 years I've been on the board, I've ever once heard of a report of somebody being tased on the campus. Now, maybe this is just routine, but if it is routine, I think it would be useful for us to have some sense of that. I, you know, when we took action a couple of weeks ago to reject the contract, we got a lot of kickback from some members of the public. Got some support from members of the public as well, but I think that some of that kickback was driven by a fear. And I didn't, I, I couldn't frankly tell whether that fear was fear that, that was a justified fear because of people's actual experiences of violence and, you know, threats of violence, et cetera. I know that we get reports from time to time, but I think a more, like, we get the Clery report, but it's not really very helpful for us to get a sense of the texture of the contacts, incident reports, you know, assaults, rapes, et cetera. And I think that as part of the assessment, it would be really helpful to understand that. And then to understand, all right, when is an armed officer actually helpful? And maybe when is an armed officer not so helpful? You know, sometimes when you have a hammer, the whole world looks like a nail. Now, I'm not saying that, that our sheriffs just go around randomly shooting people. I'm, I'm absolutely not saying that at all. But when you have a gun, when you call an armed officer, there's a particular sort of thought. I mean, imagine a world in which we didn't have prisons. Now, I know that sounds far-fetched, but imagine if you'd had a world where you didn't have prisons, and you'd have to begin to think really differently. You'd think, okay, well, what would you do to create a society in which prisons didn't exist? And so you would think about violence prevention in a completely different way. You'd think about crime prevention in a completely different way. And so what I'm hoping, that when we get back report from the administration, that one of the serious considerations will be, well, what would it take not to have armed officers on the campus? And we have other armed resources within the community, and maybe people will say, well, OPD or BPD or Alameda Police, they're never adequate, they're not fast enough, et cetera. I don't know, but I think that should be part of what we actually do consider. If we said, well, we're not going to have armed officers, that will be not our first resort. Our first resort will be, you know, Berkeley Mental Health, or some equivalent of that to come and deal with an incident. So I think that, that's part of the needs assessment that we need, is to understand what is the nature of the incident. And then I certainly would like to see an option that said, no, we weren't, we just weren't going to have armed officers on our campuses. I think that's all I've got right now. Thank you.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Chancellor.
In Trustee Ewan's request around the meetings, in the side letter, we've established quarterly meetings, and the quarterly meetings would take place with the lieutenant and myself or Vice Chancellor Sada. In addition to the quarterly meetings, and this would be around issues related to complaints or, or other services that are, we're expecting. And in addition to that, once per year, there would be a full report to the board, once a year. If there were unusual things going on, we could certainly advise the board, because we would have those quarterly meetings. Also, I think there is a quarterly review of all the information as well, and, you know, incident reports, whatever the data is there. And let's see, if there's anything else in here we ask. Oh, there is also a sentence in the side letter that says, "The district shall meet with AXO at the midpoint of the contract." So that's in December or January. So that's an additional meeting. So it looks like there's five meetings stretched out during the term, where you would actually receive these reports of different services, issues, or complaints.
And if I could just real quickly follow up on that, it'd be good to know, like, how many citations were written and, and what were they for?
Right, that would be part of that.
And, and in particular, on the citations, how many warnings?
Yeah.
And in particular, like, for smoking? You know, we're supposed to have smoking on campus. We have the ability to write tickets. I've never, I've never heard of one ticket being written for a smoking violation in 10 years. How many warnings were there given, et cetera? Anyway, I'm, I'm looking forward to deeper engagement.
Thank you, Trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Handy?
As someone who lives in Oakland, has always lived in Oakland, live with, around a lot of the students who live here, all of the stuff that we're talking about is great. We need to do what we need to do. We need to do our responsibility, but this is not what the students are asking for. And while you're having this, while we're doing assessments and all of that, we can talk this to death, but what we need to do is to communicate. I am not blaming Alameda County. I'm not blaming anyone. We have not, because we asked not. And then we found out it was the last minute. Bill Withrow and I voted against not voting for the contract, because we did not want our colleges to not be covered. The other questions that are coming up that delayed the contract, I was not thrilled with them. I mean, if we didn't want guns, if we didn't want one of those things, that was not the time to determine that at the last minute. So now we have the opportunity to make this what we want, but it's never been that we couldn't communicate, or we could not ask for these things. We did not do that. For our students, we need them to feel that the officers are there to support them, not like the incident last week where the officer came up to the campus, never got out of his car, except to ticket cars. I, as a trustee, never said that it was a priority for students to be ticketed, but when I hear the students talk about, this is what they see the officers do, and they don't know his name. This was something that could have easily been prevented. This was something that could have easily been prevented because the student said to me, there was no onboarding of that particular person. They didn't know, and this person's a student leader. I don't know him. He never came to make acquaintances. But they also, students were very clear. That's not the same as the daytime officers. I'm hearing from people, they really appreciate the officers there and the officers, the commitment that they've made to the students. But it's the training that needs to take place. We don't have to be here bumping heads. If we can all come to an agreement as to what it looks like to be here. We have had, I worked in behavioral health for 15 years, and we have what I think is the, the mobile crisis team. And it sounds like what you're talking about with cohorts. I would hope that cohorts was, cahoots, I'm sorry, was adequately funded. Because the problem was that we didn't have the funding. The county or the city is not funding enough mobile response people. So police officers who are not trained in the same way come out. Now, I know from working in behavioral health, all of my clients, as soon as they got better, they wanted to come back and continue their education. I know that they're here. And people who have mental illness and mental challenges are okay until they're not. So it's important that when we have people here on this, on this campus, that we have people who can respond. That is a more efficient way of doing it. It doesn't require guns. It requires people who have the ability to de-escalate a situation. In terms of our officers' communication with our students, leave the cop mentality outside. I know the cop mentality is necessary to get through the training and all. But when those who have made that commitment to be here on our campuses, leave that my way or the highway attitude on the outside. And I see the softening of some officers, but I see also that we still have a ways to go. But again, we had not because we ask not. So I would just like, I think that this is a very, very simple solution. If we find that within a year, that we can combine an organization such as cahoots, if they are really up and running, we really need to have the county making that available to us, just like it's available to anybody else. You should be able to pick up your phone and call the mobile crisis team. But I'm going to tell you, it works great in Berkeley, did not work in the Oakland area at all, just not enough people. But it's a great concept. So if we look at doing things like that, but let's not analyze this until it's crazy. Our, our students need to have that, that kind of communicate. They need to see the officers riding around on the bikes. They need to have people who know their names. That's what makes them feel comfortable, especially black males who don't have, black and brown males, who don't necessarily have positive interactions. We need people who come in with the attitude of, yeah, if I'm out on the streets and I'm solving something, you know, yeah, I need to be that tough guy. But when I'm on this campus, my first, first charge is to de-escalate and not make assumptions that because it's a faculty member that said it, that made the accusation that they're right and that the student of color is wrong. That's what the students were saying to us. This is something that we can do without having to do a lot of analysis. We just have to make a commitment that that's the type of environment that we're going to have here on our campuses. So I wish that we could just move forward with this, state what it is that we need. I am sure Alameda County is going to be able to figure out a way to provide those services for us. And with regards to cultural competency, I've heard many people ask, well, what is that? It's an understanding of the norms of different cultures that you may encounter. It's understanding personal space. Don't walk up on an African-American person. Don't get this close. They're going to start backing up. Cultural competency, different cultures have different personal space. It's a very simple thing that, to happen, how you communicate to people, who shakes hands, who doesn't shake hands. It's having an awareness, and you should want to have an awareness of the many, many wonderful cultures that we have here. It's not hard. We can do that through so many interactive types of things. So I don't want us to make this hard. I mean, I, I just cringed at throwing another 90,000 on top of a 4 million contract. Because as trustee Brown says, we have so much talent right here within us. I think that we can figure this out as long as we just state what we need and make sure that the student's voice is heard as we're making the determination of where we're going to go next with this. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Handy. And I'd like to remind all my trustees that after 10 o'clock, I lose it. I just completely lose it. So you are all operating here at your own risk with me, facilitating, so trustee Weinstein. Trustee Weinstein.
Right, thank, yes, yes. Thank you, trustee Handy, for what you said. I thought it was very good and I support what you spoke about. I want to also thank VC Sada for bringing in the issue of the lights and the blue phones. What I would just like to ask is that when you or whoever does the security, the next security analysis, that they include those issues, like lighting, like blue phones, like students being walked to their cars at night when it's dark, which so many young women and men are concerned about. So when we're talking about security, we're not just talking about the sheriff. We're talking about all different things that would help our students and our faculty. So I would be really appreciative if you could have that as part of the analysis as well.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. It looks like we are all out of comments. Yes.
I want to thank Vice Chancellor Sada also, who has just jumped in and just started taking charge and working with us through a lot of difficult problems and issues and situations, which everybody knows about. So thank you very much. And your comments are well taken. And that's the end of that presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Chancellor, and thank you, Vice Chancellor Sada.
You're welcome.
Yes, and I want to apologize to VC Harrison earlier because I did not call you, Dr. Harrison, but I am now. Thank you. All right, now, let's see. We are on consent, yes, and I need a motion.
So moved.
And it's been moved and seconded. And roll call, please.
Trustee Withrow?
Aye.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez, you won? Trustee Napolea Bella Reese? Trustee Brown? Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. We are on action item 8.2. Consider approval of amendment number two for contract extension with Alameda County Sheriff's Office. 8.1? Did I say, I, that's what I said. Y'all have to listen to me. 8.1, consider approval of amendment number two for contract extension with Alameda County Sheriff's Office to provide police services to the Peralta Community College District for an additional one-year term in the amount of 4.1 million dollars. And you can read the rest, 4,146,842 dollars.
So moved.
I need. We have clarification. Is that not to exceed?
That's a not to exceed number?
Thank you, not to exceed. And we have a-
We have a motion.
We have a motion, and do we have a second?
Can I make a friendly amendment now or second? Second.
Okay, we have a second. And you would like to now?
I'd like to propose a friendly amendment that we direct the chancellor, Chancellor White, on behalf of the board to support the Alameda County Board of Supervisors to conduct a financial and performance audit of the Alameda County Sheriff's Office.
And this request is a letter to them, correct? On behalf of the board?
Yes.
Got it?
Two requests.
We're going to make a clarification. So there's been a, a motion to approve the second, but there is a friendly amendment that is requested by trustee Reese that chancellor White or that the board give direction on supporting the, an audit?
A financial as well as performance audit.
Financial and performance independent audit. And these requests have already come by way of the City of Berkeley, the City of Oakland, as well as Senator Nancy Skinner. Okay. So that's a friendly amendment? We need trustee-
Friendly amendment's accepted by the maker of the motion.
It's been accepted by maker of the motion. And so now we can have discussion? Oh, do we need roll call or can we have discussion on item? Oh, okay.
We can call the question.
I want to read the phone book.
We can call the question.
We, we-
No officer?
See, they're all losing it. So we'll go ahead and do roll call. Thank you.
We're voting.
Voting on-
Trustee Withrow?
Aye.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you won? I'm sorry? Yes. Trustee Napolea Bella Reese? Yes. Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. No, you may not leave. Item 8.2, consider approval of the annual facilities, five-year capital outlay construction plan for FY 2021-25, for submission to the State Chancellor's Office and adoption of resolution 18/19-76. We have an approval and a second. Trustee Gonzalez, you won, second by trustee Handy. Discussion. Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Withrow? Trustee Handy?
Yes.
What was your discussion?
I just wanted to-
Trustee Brown?
I just wanted to ask that we might, that we could revisit this once we get our bond management plan in place because there are some things that need to be adjusted. We don't have things listed appropriately regarding the priorities. Some things are still listed as growth, some things are still listed as, they're not listed as, appropriately listed as health and safety. And we were working with our lobbyists and advocates to adjust that in light of eligibility for the Prop 51 funds. So we need to revisit this when we get our bond management in place.
Thank you. We can proceed with roll call. Thank you.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you won? Trustee Napolea Bella Reese? Trustee Brown? Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. For item 8.3, I would like to recommend that we table the item, given the rich discussion that we had earlier. And so if the board would like to support that, I would need a motion. It's been moved and seconded. Thank you. And we can do- Oh, that was, that was a, that was a, that was a please. No, that was a please look.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And-
For clarification from the chair, so what you're saying is that you want to have this brought up at the June-
At the next meeting.
Meeting.
At our June 25th.
And in the interim, the questions that we heard, we would like to send responses to the members who asked the questions in preparation for the 25th.
Yes. Thank you for that. And they wrote all the questions down, so you don't have to worry about that. And we'll go ahead and take a, we don't have to take a roll call on that, do we? We're tabling the item. We had a first and a second. Well, roll call. Thank you.
Trustee Withrow?
Aye.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez, you won? Trustee Napolea Bella Reese? Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 8.5, consider approval of the first reading of Berkeley City College, College of Alameda, Laney College and Merritt College goals aligned with the state's vision for success.
So we had the board align with the vision for success. The colleges are required to do the same. They've presented their information in alignment with the vision for success, and we're asking for approval. It's due to the State Chancellor's Office by June 30th.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved. I just want to have a second so we can discuss. We have a second from trustee Reese and question. Reese, trustee Brown.
So at that, when we discussed this the last time, there were some names that I was supposed to provide through the chancellor for community-based organizations. Because part of what we were going to look at was how to do our grassroots, embed the, the colleges through connections with the community. And I did not do that because Peralta gave me a whole lot of other assignments in the interim. So I didn't get to that. But I think that it's, that still bears doing. This is only the first reading, and it has a due date. It doesn't mean that we can't develop that plan. But what we are not doing yet is embedding that plan on how to embed ourselves in the community yet. We keep sort of talking around it. So I still think we need to do that. And I, did I see Dr. Brown raise it?
As well, because there are, there was an amendment from the last meeting's comments that you made. So maybe President Gilkerson or-
Just, it's, it's the next item that you're addressing. So it's item 8.6 that you're actually addressing. This is a new item coming to you tonight with the college goals that are aligned for the vision for success. And they're actually like data-driven goals that the Chancellor's Office is asking for.
So you're talking about the, the vision for success from the State Chancellor's Office, those goals. And, well, is there, is there, would we not have them in 8.5 and 8.6? I mean, is there, because there's, 8.6 is the vision for success and then 8.5, I mean, 8.5 or 8.6?
So- So the 8.5 is the, the, each individual college has been asked to create goals aligned with the vision for success goals that actually have numerical data that goes into a system called NOVA. And it generates goals that the state is asking for us to, to set. So each of us have gone through a governance process at our colleges to determine what those goals are. And those metrics would be something like how many degrees or certificates we're going to try to obtain and what are some strategies like that. So it doesn't go as involved as 8.6, which is really trying in our best efforts to update the district strategic goals that have not been updated in many years. And so we were trying in an effort to do that in an interim process to then be able to kind of have some alignment down to what you were seeing tonight from the colleges, though not in depth. It would be our strategic plans and our educational master plans that would give you more depth to what I think the connection you are addressing.
Okay, I got you. So, so the components of the student-funded, the student-centered funding formula that are, that are aligned with the vision of success, for success are the 8.6. And the actual technical sort of formula or technical components are 8.5. Okay, I got it. Never mind.
So we're going to, do you have questions?
Question, to clarify the process. Did, not our process, but the process in creating this, did the, did the colleges make their vision for success goal plans first? Or did, did PCCD make them first?
The presidents to respond, but I believe the college, the individual colleges also based their goals on PCCD. And what was in the strategic, strategic plan for PCCD? No?
So for BCC, when, when I came to BCC, there was already an existing district-
Strategic plan.
Strategic plan. And BCC did a revised update of their educational master plan so that it could align with the district goals, strategic plan, and then also with student equity. So that's what you're seeing in terms of BCC's goals. And then next year, we're going to undergo- to undergo a new strategic planning process for a new EMP.
So for, just for context, the district strategic plan has not been updated since 2015, so, so the colleges went, so when I came to Laney College, additionally, we updated, the education master plan had been adopted by all of the four colleges in the district, and so Laney College last year went through a strategic, actually maybe two years ago, wow, it went through a strategic planning process to create a strategic plan to help actualize the educational master plan, and so when the vision for success goals came out from the State Chancellor's Office, our goal was to align those goals that we already had adopted in our strategic plan to the vision for success plan, and then trying to link it also to the district generally strategic plan. So, so I think it has been done in concert, but there has been, because the district strategic plan has been outdated by some years, I think there needs to, this was the effort, item eight point six, which will next come, was our effort to try to update that in the interim.
And along the same lines, last spring, this time last year, Merritt has been doing strategic summits. We do them twice a year, and last year, we aligned our goals with the State Chancellor's goals, so that was prior to the PCCD, the next item on the agenda. So, but we've all been trying to, as President Gilkerson said, we've all been trying to align them somewhat, but we're just getting to the PCCD goals, so, but we've, the colleges have pretty much done it ahead of time, before we finalized this, the PCCD goals.
All right, so I think just similar for COA, so this year, we used our participatory governance process to revet our EMP goals, our educational master plan goals, to the vision for success 2022, and then we use the existing PCCD goals as the other pathway through, because we already align ours to the district, or we have it during our strategic planning, so those are already aligned, and then what's being placed, I think what's also getting, maybe it's some clarity, is what is being placed to the state by the end of this month in NOVA, which is a, just a portal basically, for the state. There, what the state wants us to do are data elements, for each vision for success 2022 goal, they have indicators, like how many UC transfers you're going to have, and they pre-populate one column, saying how many you had last year. The state goals already said, we wanted you to do it by forty percent or whatever by 2022, so then we'd say, oh, guess what our goal by 2022 is, it's placing forty percent of our current number by 2022, and so you do all those indicators, and it's the indicators that are really submitted in the porter. There's no actual nice document for the state, it's just lots of indicators, which then I'm sure they will aggregate in some giant way and do something lovely with, but that's what's going to the state through NOVA, in that we have to certify, or those actually more numeric numbers.
So, the bottom line is, Trustee Reese, your new Chancellor has to undergo and start and initiate a new strategic plan for the Peralta Community College District, it's overdue, and that's what you're hearing. It's overdue, but the colleges have been able to have their own processes, work within their, what they have in terms of PCCD goals to align, and fortunately, they do align with the vision for success, but there needs to be a new plan.
May I just make one last comment? That's lovely to hear, particularly because I want to make, and that says to me that we need to reorient so that we're supporting the colleges, as opposed to the colleges supporting what the district does, so that was really my main point, so thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
So, Madam President, in the past, we've had the Board vote on first readings for Board policies, so I presume we're going to continue that practice.
We have a first and a second, so we will do roll call if there are no further questions. Thank you.
Trustee Whitro?
Aye.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez, you won? Trustee Napolia Bella Reese? Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you, we are on item eight point six, consider approval of the final reading of the PCCD goals aligned with the state's vision for success. I need a motion to approve.
It's all moved.
It's been moved. I have a second discussion. Oh, I have a second, Trustee Handy? Thank you. Whitro, moved. Discussion, yes, Trustee Brown?
We have a due date for this, so I would just suggest that we continue, because we have to do a strategic plan, that we don't, we, we...
It takes time.
Yeah, that, that we, we work on, we're going to continue to work on it, but I think we need to get this turned in, but I think that we have to be very clear that if there is an institutional inequity, not just Peralta, but there are inequities in education, we absolutely can't not take this seriously and work with these goals. It doesn't matter where the goals come from, the improvement has to come, so I think we have to commit ourselves and continue to work on this, because that is our mission. If we're not doing this, then there is no point.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, yes, please, Chancellor, through the Chancellor.
I just wanted to clarify that the district alignment does not have to be submitted to the state, it's the colleges' goals that have to be certified by the colleges and the trustees in NOVA, but we don't submit the district plan alignment.
I love my college president.
That's right, because we had to request this extension.
I'm sorry, that's how we got the extension.
Exactly.
So I'm going to send it in with a cover letter, because the letter we got said they wanted the alignment with the vision for success, and they wanted a board process to do that, so...
Okay, yes.
We'll, we'll get that cleared up, but...
Thank you.
It is due on June 30th, correct?
Thank you.
I just wanted to let Trustee Brown know that I put in as many names as I wrote down, so they are in there, okay?
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Whitro?
Aye.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez, you won? Trustee Napolia Bella Reese? Trustee Brown?
Yes, with the understanding that we shall continue to dig, dig deep in this and work on it.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eight point seven, consider approval of the proposed 2019, 2020, I'm sorry, 2022 district staffing plan first reading. Motion to approve, please.
Move items eight point seven, eight, and nine in a group.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I need a motion for, I need a second for that.
Second.
It's been second. Discussion, seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Whitro?
Aye.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez, you won? Trustee Napolia Bella Reese? Trustee Brown? Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you, we're moving to the action items that were moved. Four point one is the first one, consider approval of the calendar and position description for the Peralta Community College District Chancellor search.
It's all moved.
It's been moved. Second, and discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Whitro?
Aye.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez, you won? Trustee Napolia Bella Reese? Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein? And Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five point four, consider approval of ICC number 21232 for Kathy Suma Wolf, and the amount not to exceed $60,000 for the fiscal year 2019-2020. Who's item was that?
It's all moved.
It's been approved, and do we have a second? Second, yes, and Trustee Reese?
So, President Karas, or Chancellor White, ICC's, red flag for me. The question that I have for this is, this particular consultant has been with us for three years, so this is the third year that she's actually had a contract. In 2017, it was a $25,000 contract with the same scope, with a $15,000 addendum to $40,000, in 2018, it was $50,000, and to 2019, this particular year, it, it's at 60K. So, as I look at that, and given the scope, I need clarity there in terms of the continual increase?
Sure, so I can mostly speak for the last two, even though the first one I can a little bit, because that one, I believe Kathy came in a little bit after the start of the fiscal year, and so that first year, I think you said amounted to about $45,000 totals, because there was an amendment that year?
Forty.
Forty? And so then the next year, when I became President, I did ask her to do some more work for myself, realizing with our enrollment work, that messaging from the college, some strategic messaging was needed to be ramped up from where you were, so I brought her along to also start my roundtable work, or re-energize it, which is a community roundtable with community members, elected leaders and whatnot, and to do other marketing for us, and so she did that last year, and so in prepping for this year, I want her to continue that level of work, and the, the part of the scope that is different this year than the previous years, was our, out of this past year, our guided pathways advisory team, during the year, they realized they wanted to increase communication strategies through their guided pathways work, and they wanted Kathy to provide that service for them, and so the 10K addition is out of the guided pathways initiative grant, specifically to work with them to better communicate their work to the entire college community, and work on strategies around that, so that's why there's the 10K increase from the 50.
Right. And, and what I saw in that contract was the operative word, "support" the guided pathways work, as opposed to doing a lot of the guided pathways work, and that's 100 hours, so there, there is where my concern lies.
Okay, sure.
It's, it's 100 hours, and it's supporting the guided pathways work, so...
Thank you, I have Trustee Brown, and then Trustee Weinstein, and the Q, thank you.
So I would like to pose a suggestion, that we look at, that we assess the needs of the college presidents with regard to their marketing and their outreach and their IT, and that we try and figure out how to provide that without the ICC's, because if, when we do our strategic plan, it's going to end up with a focus on outreach and marketing, and a roundtable where you're engaging community members is exactly what we need, and we don't want, and each time the ICC comes up, we look at it and go, why are we doing this? And the college presidents say, because we're supposed to actually tell people that we have classes here, and we heard from the PIOs that they're there, and that they're, their budget has been cut, so we have to look at that. We have to look at that as part of, part of our strategic plan, and it would, and I'm sure that the college presidents would prefer to have somebody that was around all the time, and you didn't have to do ICC's, so I don't blame the college presidents, I think it's one of those structural things that we have heard from Collaborative Brain Trust, those workarounds that we do, so we've got to figure out how to tie the pieces together, our enrollment management, our outreach, our IPO department, we've got to actually fit that into the budget and do an assessment that, so I would just suggest that we do that, so we don't keep sort of going in that same circle.
Thank you, Trustee Weinstein.
Yeah, basically, I agree with what Trustee Brown is saying, and also, when I see the ICC's, I start being concerned that we're not paying attention to our union people, and that we're not helping to train them to step into these positions, so it seems like there's a lot of ICC's, and I hope that we can do something different with that.
Thank you, I agree with my fellow trustees on this issue, so, any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Whitro?
Aye.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez, you won? Trustee Napolia Bella Reese? Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. Board of Trustees reports, I know you all have plenty to talk about and tell us... Trustee Handy?
We didn't get to make reports last time because we went so late, but I think it's really important, what I wanted to share with you. I attended an event for Steve Brumfield, who was one of our student trustees, who's gone on to Cal, and is now going to be going to South Africa as a fellow for a year, and there was a great event hosted by Victor Flint at Berkeley City College, where they brought back all the student ambassadors, and I wish I had a camera, because I came to the realization of where the challenges started happening with enrollment, is with, with changes that happened there. What was built by Victor Flint and the Student Ambassador Program, each student talked about it, they were from, from Russia, from Peru, from China, and all of them said they had one thing in common, they knew no one, many of them came from immigrant families, so they worked full-time jobs, and they went to school full-time. They came to school, they were ghosted, no one knew them, but Victor Flint had this way, he has this way of just picking out a student and saying, you know, you're going to do this, you're going to do that, so the students would start to work, and one young, one woman said that she only spoke 100 words of English, and Victor put her at the help desk, and she said, but I only have 100 words, he goes, well, you will have more, and they will help you. So these, these students are now working, they're with the United Nations, they're working for Facebook, they're work, they are incredible, but none of them would have been in the position that they were in, that they're in now, if it had not been for the ambassador program. Now, I remember some years ago, one of our presidents, prior to your coming there, thought it wasn't as important, and they started to cut down on that particular piece, and I think that's when the students stopped connecting as much, but I have to say, what we had, and what Victor Flint created, we really need him to teach, how, teach folks how we could do that at each campus, because every single one of them became engaged, and they supported each other. Some talked about not having any skills at all, not being able to do math, or whatever, they supported each other, and that's when I came into Peralta, when I, with the ambassador program at Berkeley City College, so I would like us to really kind of look at it, maybe we can ask the students to do a video testimony and send it to us, but I'm telling you, if you heard them, and there were about 20 of them, you would really see how powerful it was, and to recreate our own models, I think will really help us to prevent students from feeling that they're the only ones, and that they don't belong, and ghosting on us, so that's what I just wanted to share with you tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Handy, any other? We will move to announcements, please, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. The June 25th retreat has been rescheduled to July 9th, and the June 25th meeting will be a regular Board meeting, and a reminder that the district and colleges are on a summer 410 work schedule, and closed on Fridays from June 3rd through July 26th. Madam President, that concludes the announcements for this evening.
Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.